Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 25th, 2025 regularly scheduled meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board. I'm calling the meeting to order at 5:10 PM. To access translation in Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. And if you're here in Dejounte, you can pick up a headset in the back corner of the auditorium. The board is about to go into closed session, but before we do, we're here to listen to public comment on closed session items. Individuals wishing to speak on closed session items listed, if you're here in the auditorium and you haven't already done so, please submit a WCCUSD public comment card. And you can find those on the entryway table. And if you're participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. If you are accessing the meeting by phone, press star nine. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes and the time allotted is one hour. Speaking time shall not be transferred from one person to another. There's also no substitution of speakers. We alternate between a Zoom comment and an in-person comment. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly without interruption or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time as if it were your own. Be open to another point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. The items listed on the closed session agenda tonight are Student Discipline Readmission Case Number 242503 Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation Public Employee Appointment K-8 Principal Secondary Principal Director Interim Associate Superintendent of Maintenance and Operations Conference with Labor Negotiators. Is there any public comment on any closed session item?
There's no public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we are adjourning now to closed session at 5:12 and we'll be back at 6:30 for open session. Thank you, everyone. Do we need a West meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board? The board is returning from closed session. I am calling open session to order at 6:37 PM. To access translation in Zoom, please click on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. And if you're here in the auditorium and need translation, you may pick up a headset in the back corner of the auditorium. In a few minutes, we will begin the public comment agenda item. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board on any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Please prepare now for public comment. And if you're here in the auditorium and you'd like to make public comment, please fill out and submit a WCCUSD public comment card. You can find them on the table in the entryway. And if you're participating via Zoom, please raise your Zoom hand in the Zoom app prior to the beginning of the item on the agenda. If participating by phone, press star nine after your comment card has been turned in. The cards are placed in the order received and we call on speakers one at a time, alternating between a public comment here in Dejounte and one on Zoom. Public comment generally lasts about one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. And in the meantime, we will move on to the rest of our opening procedures. B2 Pledge of Allegiance. If you are willing or able, please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. B3 Land, Labor, and Body Acknowledgement. Land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenyo Moicma Carkin Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Labor and body recognition acknowledgement. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Author Dr. Rochelle Rogers Art. B4 West Contra Costa Unified School District Board Anti-Racism Statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active efforts to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism explicit or implicit stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCU education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment, where each student, staff member, and community partner is a respected and valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs. Is it okay? No, there's still a little buzz. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff and students and community to living these standards of anti-racism in our schools. Board approved, March 20th, 2024. B5 Role Call. Dr. Moses, would you please take a call role?
Good evening. Trustee Gonzalez-Holey.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
President Reckler.
Good evening, President.
Clerk Iniana.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Trustee Hernandez.
Good evening, President.
Student Trustee Barone.
Good evening, President.
And Student Trustee Espinoza Jr.
Good evening, President.
That concludes the role call.
Thank you. B6 Report Ratification of Closed Session. Dr. Moses, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Yes. Regarding Agenda Item A.2.3, the board voted to approve the appointment of Rosalynn Brown as Director of Special Education. The vote was unanimous with all trustees present. Also, Item A.2.3, the board voted to approve the appointment of Christopher Pierce as the principal of Betty Reed Sasken Middle School. The vote was unanimous with all trustees present. Also in closed session, the board voted to approve the appointment of Dejounte Givens as the principal of Verdi K-8 School. The vote was unanimous with all trustees present. And that concludes the report out.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call a point of privilege. Can everybody appear here? Not really, right? Can everybody hear? Yeah, everybody's okay. Okay, okay. Moving on to B8 Dismissal of a Classified Management Employee. Dr. Johnson or Dr. Moses?
Thank you. This evening, we had a request from Michael Littold to address the board publicly. Is Mr. Littold present?
He is not present.
Okay.
He is not online.
Okay, so we're proceeding to the next item. Okay. Okay. We are up to B8 Public Comment. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board on any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Public comment will last approximately one hour. The time allotted to each speaker is two minutes. Should additional speakers remain at the conclusion of one hour, public comment may be extended. The time allotted per speaker beyond the first hour is generally one minute. Individuals wishing to speak, please submit a WCCUSD public comment card, or if participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app prior to the beginning of this item on the agenda. If you're calling in by phone, press star nine. Speaking time shall not be transferred from one person to another. There are no substitution of speakers. Speakers can also make public comment again for each discussion and action item on the agenda after staff presentation. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. The same protocols recited above apply. The public comment period is a safe space where diverse viewpoints may be expressed civilly without interruption or intimidation. Please listen attentively to each speaker's comment and respect their time at the podium as if it were your own. Be open to a different point of view if one is offered. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Is there any public comment tonight?
Yes, there is public comment.
Good evening. Hear ye, hear ye, hear ye! Today is a momentous day. After well over 15 years, the district has taken its first step this day towards a new Stige Elementary School. A work crew from Alton Construction, along with their massive excavator, showed up at Stige this morning. And before they left for the day, six of the 16 portables lay in ruins. What used to be classrooms now sits in separated piles of differing materials, with some piles headed for the landfill while others for the recycling companies. The demolition of these portables will continue till early next week. The demolition of the main buildings is still being scheduled. Considering the asbestos, the lead-based paint, and a whole lot of cooties, extra care must be taken with these buildings erased. As the Chair of the CBOC, I've expressed my very strong desire to be kept in the loop to ensure that the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is on top of our current bond projects. I visited the site five times on Monday and Tuesday to see if the demo had started, but I came away empty-handed. This morning, I was sent a text from former board member Charles Ramsey with a video showing that the project had begun. I brushed my teeth, jumped in the car, raced to see the show before it had progressed too far. I went back twice more throughout the day, snapping nearly 300 photos and several short videos that will be posted online. Although I didn't get the notice I was hoping for, I'm sure that the district alerted the Stige community so they could saunter over for a looksee. I'm very appreciative that Alton has been so accommodating as well as the security guard. It's always a good day when people seem glad to see you, isn't it? On another note, I was pleased to see trustee Anana marching on the Juneteenth parade on Saturday morning. I'm disappointed that the parade organizers didn't extend an invitation to the board as a whole or our brand-new superintendent to march along with the Richmond High Marching Band, the El Cerrito Spirit Squad, both of which look mighty sharp, as well as students, parents, and staff from the Mandarin School. Lastly, keeping in mind that this is my 57th year affiliated with the district in one way or another, I want to extend my welcome and hearty support for our new superintendent. I have every confidence in her success and offer her my assistance wherever she might feel it of value. Thank you.
Good evening, board and community. As President of United Teachers of Richmond, I want to publicly acknowledge, appreciate, and thank the 1,500 certificated employees represented by UTR who show up every single day to provide nurturing learning environments for our students despite enduring one of the most difficult years in recent history. Despite being underpaid, undervalued, and underappreciated by a system that treats them as a cog in the wheel, your union sees you, values your Herculean efforts, and stands in unwavering solidarity as we fight for a just contract which expires in five days. As a union of professionals who make a difference in the lives of our students and families every day, we are prepared to fight to end the reign of false austerity imposed by a leadership that values reserves, consultants, and contracts over our students and schools to badly. We are prepared and optimistically hopeful to clean up the mess that past leadership has created. I'd like to acknowledge and thank Superintendent Cotton, who has been on the job for less than a week and has already made more contact with the union than previous leadership had in seven months on the job. The union is always willing and ready to put students first despite what you might have heard falsely led to believe behind closed doors. As you know, we stay ready so we don't have to get ready. We engaged and coordinated and well-executed pickets across 53 school sites last month. That's 98 participation across five cities in West County. And now, we're prepared to escalate our actions in the fall since the district's bargaining team failed to meaningfully engage over the five months of negotiations. Under new leadership, we urge the board to reject the false austerity regime from business services, to put students first, fully staff our schools, stabilize our district, and lead towards the aspirational goals outlined in the LCAP. The budget on tonight's agenda is a betrayal of the LCAP and a betrayal of West County students and families. It's time to align our values with our budget.
Good evening, board, district staff. My name is Skye Nelson, teacher and parent at El Cerrito High School. I want to talk about Measure T is expiring in 2027, and we need to have people onboard with renewing that measure for, say, eight years or whatever we decide. It's been renewed for the past 20 or so years. A few facts about the Measure T. It funds about $9.8 million a year in various teacher retaining and attracting core academics, supporting science labs and materials, providing lower class sizes, preparing students for college. And it's very important that we work on this together and come together as a team to pass this in 2027. Now, the deadline for next June's primary election is January 22nd. So we need to start writing drafts for this plan immediately, I think. And I have a plan here written by my team of volunteers, teachers, parents, community members, that I will pass out to you if it's helpful, a timeline from now until next June. I want to say that in addition, I'm still confused as to how community members like myself can help organize and popularize a parcel tax when the district has not entered into serious negotiations with the union. We need to all be on the same page together in the community and have a good reputation for working together. And I encourage the board to resolve this impasse as soon as possible. Public perception of this impasse is, I believe, not positive for the district. And it's going to make all of our work easier if we can look like we've worked together and work these things out. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. Well, we finished the year. We have moved into our extended learning, expanded learning, summer school programs, other programs, and we're off to a roaring head start. We are excited about all the changes that we have coming. Our nutrition center, we are excited about all the challenges of the closed high schools this summer. One of those challenges is also working with transcripts that are not electronic. I have heard from multiple school sites that that is something we didn't possibly think about, and we need to. I'm asking that we start thinking about how we're going to digitalize all of those records so that it makes it easier for our staff to accommodate our community in public so that they can continue to achieve their goals in education and jobs, particularly if they ever had to get a job as a teacher in our district, right? Or a classified person in our district would be helpful. So that is something I am asking, and that I've been tasked to ask. The other one is, I want to thank all of the members in SSA this year. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for coming and continuing to come. Congratulations to many of us that have retired. One said person is Valerie Dixon from Kennedy High School. She was a long, longstanding person, a soul of that school for many years, and I appreciate all her dedication and work. There are several others out there, but Valerie holds somebody dear to my heart with training me at one point in my life on how to really work and get a good work ethic. I would also like to, from SSA, congratulate Ms. Cotton on coming to our district, and thank you for coming home. Have a great summer, everyone.
Good evening, President Reckler and interim Superintendent Moses, board. And I'm Mark Mitchell. I'm the Executive Director of United Teachers of Richmond, and I want to extend an extremely warm welcome to our incoming Superintendent Cheryl Cotton. We're very excited about your arrival and all the possibilities that we have to work together for the betterment of West County students. The teachers stand ready to work with you to make you an extremely successful educational leader for our community. So I just wanted to say that. Couple of other things I want to say that aren't as wonderful, and this is unfortunately the only opportunity that we as a union have to address the staff leadership of the district. And so I just want to say that's why sometimes we bring a laundry list of issues to present here because this is our only opportunity and we only have two minutes to do it. So we've got to be quick. On the Stige demolition, our members have observed that there's folks over there and working on the demolition. They're wearing only hard hats. There's no masks. There's no, you know, breathing equipment for this allegedly such a dangerous situation that our members can't have their things back. So that's very disheartening. And of the four educators that have filed tort claims with the district, one of them has now resigned and is moving on. She's so disheartened at the disrespectful treatment that she's received trying to retrieve her belongings and the instructional materials for her students. President Reckler, please direct the staff to provide a tort claim response and writing as is required by the policy of the board so that we can proceed to court with these educators for their belongings. They filed those tort claims on April 28th. It's now the end of June. I think it's time. I wanted to say also, the Richmond Charter Academy was renewed at the county board. The district sent no one from staff to the meeting, and the contractor that was sent only spoke at public comment and did not provide a compelling presentation and was cut off by the clock. We lost that vote and 300 students are lost to our district.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris McLean. I teach sixth grade DLI at Dover Elementary, and I wanted to congratulate Superintendent Cotton. You know, I spoke with my colleagues at my school, some other UTR people in the district about the new appointment, and I heard some positivity. They had some good experiences with Superintendent Cotton through the HR department when they were getting hired, stuff like that. When I got hired 10 years ago as a teacher, I remember signing a paper in the office down in the district with you. And I wanted to say we're hopeful, but there are some things that we think should be like basic necessities that should be covered. For example, we're one of the few school districts in Contra Costa County in which the teachers don't have 100% paid medical insurance. We're one of the lowest-paid school districts in the county, even though like some places are way cheaper to live than where we live. And we're one of the school districts with the highest need. And in order for attendance to rise, in order for students to get the support that they need, the teachers should be getting not just the bare minimum, but their fair share. In terms of pay, the students should not be having programs cut. So I think if you're thinking about the budgets, any important decisions, don't think about the bare minimum that we deserve, which we're not getting currently. Think about what would enable us to thrive as educators, what would enable the students and families to thrive as community members, as recipients of the services that we provide. So again, I wanted to congratulate you, but also I wanted to show our optimism and our hopes for the direction of the school district moving forward. We hope that these things get addressed and then we get not just the bare minimum, but what we really deserve.
Gabby Micheli. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. This is Gabby Micalletti, Vice President of United Teachers of Richmond. And one of the things I wanted to bring to anyone who's listening attention tonight is that this board has the waiver for not meaning 55% of spending being spent on classrooms. So that's teachers, that's aides, that's direct services to our students. This has happened many years in a row now, despite the fact that this district takes in more money than a lot of districts nearby per student. And it has shown that this lack of investment in educators, it is not working out for our students. It is not keeping teachers here. And I hope that in the next year, we will actually spend the minimum legal amount of spending on our educators and that we will really make that investment and come together. I'm looking forward to Dr. Cotton's leadership and hoping that we will see more support there for our educators. I also wanted to bring up, because I am working summer school this year, that it is utter chaos. It has been really, really hard. The students are lovely. The students are completely wonderful, but we weren't given our curriculum or any of our materials until about 30 minutes before our students showed up on the first day despite having a setup day on Wednesday. I know at my site, there's a teacher who usually teaches kindergarten who has been placed in fourth grade, and a teacher who usually teaches fourth grade who was placed in kindergarten, and neither of them wanted that assignment. They wanted the other one. There was a lack of clarity at our first day together about whether this was 20 days or 19 days of summer school. So I would encourage that if you want to bring services to the public, you make sure that we are giving good services with clarity to support the students of this district.
Good evening, board. I know it's been a while since I've been here. And hey, Cabinet, and thank you, Cheryl, for taking the job to be our superintendent. We really appreciate you, and I know this is going to be an awesome journey with you here. I just want to bring up some things that we've been dealing with this past school year and hope that we can go forward and not have the same issues. I would, as the ASAT Chair, we haven't been able to get a clear understanding on where the expenditures, the expenditures went with the rollover in the budget. So we've seen the budget, and that was given to us, but we didn't, all the numbers were even, and we didn't understand what the rollover was. So when it comes to the past budget, when we've seen that, we wanted to know what happened to the rollover, if it got all spent, and where did it get spent? Because I had asked before, I had asked the board if we could keep the money allocated for the students it was allocated for if it did not get spent in the previous year. A lot of the activities for our Black and African-American children did not get done last year, and we wanted to ensure that they got done in the upcoming years. So we would like to meet with whoever would support us with getting that information. So we would like to meet with whoever would support us with getting that information so that we can be a good advisory to the district on what we would like to see for our children in the district. And also, we would like to work more closely with our liaison to get a better relationship with OASA and transparency around where services and programs are being provided for our children and how much money and resources are going to provide those services and some clear data on if those services are being effective and we should, if we should keep going on with them. That's been kind of a miss this past year, and we don't want to have to go into next year, we're not having that information so we can clearly advise. Thank you, I'm complete.
Samantha Torres.
Good evening, Board, and welcome Superintendent Cotton. My name is Samantha Torres, and I serve as a volunteer commissioner of the City of Richmond's Recreation and Parks Commission. I also serve on several local recreational committees, all unpaid, because I believe access to youth recreation is a public good worth protecting. Today's governance meeting gave me hope for the first time in years. I saw honest conversations about how misapplications of current facilities policies have excluded resident youth. I saw leadership and acknowledgement, but what we still need is accountability. For example, it's been 146 days since I submitted a public records request and it hasn't been fulfilled. So let me be clear, WCCUSD residents pay many taxes, including bonds and the maintenance and recreation assessment district fee for access to school facilities for recreational use. Our local clubs and leagues are not asking for favors, they are entitled to access as taxpayers. And yet, Kennedy High School, first funded with Measure R dollars, was then allotted exclusively to non-resident Berkeley organization. Will this continue in the fall? Without transparency or systemic change, how can we trust that WCCUSD will be good stewards of future public dollars like Measure T? Finally, in a low green space city like Richmond, school sites are vital recreational spaces. Where are the joint use agreements? I've had leader, city leaders ask me directly about gym and court access at our school facilities. Collaborations matter, especially to keep youth sports affordable and equitable. As public servants, we must protect our kids from the exploitation of the pay-to-play model that is pricing families out, especially girls, children with disabilities, and low-income communities. Let's work together. Thank you.
Christine Hatcher. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I would like to begin by acknowledging President of the Board, Trustee Reckler, and other members of the Board, and our new Superintendent Cheryl Cotton. On behalf of WCCA, which is the Administrators Union here in West Contra Costa Unified School District, I would like to officially welcome you back to the district. We recognize the magnitude of the work and the critical role you now hold in leading our schools and supporting our students, staff, and families. As an association, we are committed to working with you in partnership. We look forward to building a professional collaborative relationship grounded in mutual respect and a shared commitment to student success. We know that there will be challenges ahead, but we are ready to engage in open and solution-focused dialogue as we move the district forward together. Again, welcome, and we look forward to the work. Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you to everybody who gave public comment this evening. We're moving on to B9, Agenda Review and Adoption. Does anybody on the board have anything on the agenda? Want to move or? Okay, we got a note here. Table F1. F1 is the Charter Annual Update. Okay, you'd like to table, you'd like to table that? Okay, so is it okay I would take F1 off the agenda? Great, we'll do so. Okay, and we'll proceed with the agenda with F1 tabled. Okay, moving now to B10, Recognition of Interim Superintendent Dr. Kim Moses. And with that, the Board and the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board would like to honor and recognize Dr. Kim Moses, Interim Superintendent, for your service over this time, seven months as interim superintendent. The district thanks, the district and the Board thank you for your leadership and the service you provided to students, families, and the staff of the West Contra Costa Unified School District community. Does anybody on the board have comments? Go right ahead. Oh, oh, do you have something else I think? Okay, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, who are we recognizing? I keep looking at Superintendent Cotton.
Yeah, that's fine, whoever wants to go is fine.
I just, I know I said a couple of things to you at the last meeting, but I wanted to just add that I think that you and I have, I was really reflecting, I think laughed, cried, hard to believe, but debated, and sometimes agreed and disagreed. And I think that's a very healthy thing, and I just appreciate that you always, no matter what, gave me your position with, and your, with students in the middle of your thinking. And I always appreciated that, even if we disagreed at times. So thank you for stepping up, because I know that we asked you at a time that there's a lot that's been going on. This last spring has been challenging for a lot of us. With the current administration, it has changed how people feel, how people act, how we behave with each other. And I know that your role, no one ever will understand unless you're in that role. And you have to sometimes prioritize, say no, and sometimes say yes, depending on the situation. So I just want to appreciate the time that you gave us in this position. It's weird because I know you're continuing in another important position, right? So you're not going anywhere, but I just want to, specifically the challenges come with being a superintendent. So really thank you for that, because I know that I would get emails from you at, you know, I don't even want to say the times, but because you were working always. And I know that you had your own personal, you know, things going on that you had to do. So anyways, all that to say, thank you for the last six months. I really did appreciate and I continue to appreciate your leadership.
Superintendent Cotton, did you want to go? Okay, so what she said, because she wasn't mic'd. If Board members would like to finish making comments, and then we'll turn it over to the floor. Anybody else? Trustee Smith-Fulks?
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for accepting the charge when asked. You did not have to, and you have done this job with grace and dignity and transparency and honesty, and you do not and have not gotten the amount of thank you and kudos that you deserve. You not only kept us afloat, but you kept us moving. And to that, we all need to stop and be appreciative. And I have seen you handle the comments, the emails, the looks, the dismissiveness, and you have done it all with style, and you have done it all with grace, and you have done it all modeling what it's like to be a Black woman in leadership, and it is not easy. So to all the other little girls who are watching you, thank you. To those who are sitting here trying to be the best version of themselves, thank you. And to the district as a whole, you did more than was ever asked of you to do. And I'm so happy that you're going back to CBO, and I'm happy that because you did so well, it opened the doors for others to do well. So it, I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you for showing up and showing out, and I really, really appreciate and value you. So I am complete, thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for the, you were here before I was, but I think you've been so supportive and so helpful, I think guiding us and helping us navigate, you know, our new role. So I want to appreciate that. I want to appreciate the accessibility that you have given us to like reach out and be able to ask questions and be us authentically, having those conversations that are not just conversations that we hold in a professional level, but you know, conversations that give us a little bit more background on like the why. And being able to see beyond, I think sometimes we miss that, you know, we miss seeing the human part of it. So I want to appreciate for coming out, for standing here, for trucking along regardless of whatever was happening, you know, behind the scenes. I really appreciate that, and I, you know, just want to thank you so much for that because I don't know if I would have been able to. But you know, really appreciate, I think, the work that you've done. And you know, being on here, I don't think I could have done it with anyone else but you. I think coming on here, seeing you first as my son's principal many, many moons ago, and now in this role, I really do appreciate the work that you're doing. And you know, I want to be able to work with you, I think, in your different capacity, and I know that that's what, you know, you hold true to your heart. So I, this is not a goodbye, this is a see you in the CBO role. And you know, I look forward to, you know, building out an even stronger board and a stronger cabinet that we can all move forward with. So I appreciate that, Dr. Moses.
I want to echo what Clerk Kingdiana said. Thank you for taking the time to welcome us as a new trustees and walking us through the different budgets, taking my calls after five o'clock when I'm off work because I have questions, and just the guidance and you know, and being opened, and your dedication to the students, the staff, and you know, our community. I want to thank you for it.
Student trustees?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. My time here has been short, but very much fulfilled, and I want to say thank you to Dr. Moses. You've been very welcoming and kind of a role model, and thank you for being here and providing a space for me to give a voice, and thank you for hosting agenda review meetings and everything, and they were very helpful, so thank you.
Yes, just echoing what Student Trustee Bottom just said, thank you, especially stepping in a time of critical need, especially with all that's happening within our district for stepping up, taking leadership, and while still doing all this, being a guidance and mentor to all of us, and not only the Board, but as well to the Student Trustees, me and former trustee Wilson, and then Student Trustee Bottom right beside me. Thank you so much for everything.
We'll go down to the floor.
I want to say to Dr. Moses, whom I have known for quite a long time, we were teachers together, I don't know if you remember, our makeshift teacher, new teacher support group that we initiated way back in the day, yes. I just want to say that it takes a true leader to step up when called, and you did that, and you've done that repeatedly in your career. I see you, Dr. Moses, I see your strength, I see your knowledge, I see your patience, and I'm just, I am proud to call you a colleague, so glad that we will be working together to move this district forward in amazing ways that, you know, is so needed right now. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of myself, on behalf of our Cabinet, on behalf of the students and staff and families of West Contra Costa, and behalf of our amazing Board, who is working to ensure that our students have the very best, the very best education that they can possibly have. So thank you for all of this, thank you for stepping into this role and for continuing to lead. We have a small token I'll bring up to you, and then Board President Reckler, I will pass it to you.
Thank you. So I again would like to say thank you very much, and for everybody at home and in the audience, we do have a plaque that everybody could see thanking Dr. Moses for her work, and I very much enjoyed working with you, learned a lot from you, think we had a lot of good conversations, and it was a very enjoyable experience, and thank you very much for your service. We can go down and take a picture? You want to do that? Okay. And oh, yeah, show, show the camera the beautiful flowers, those are very, those are lovely. All right, we're, we'll be back in a second, and we're just going to step down and take a picture. Dr. Moses, do you want to do that, or I can, I can read it? Okay, so two students from the All Student Congress have, has served as Student Trustees to the Board of Education for the second semester of the 2024 to the 2025 school year. The Board would like to recognize and commend Jorge Espinoza Jr. from Middle College High and Nicky Barone from Richmond High School for their participation. They have contributed to the student, their student perspective on behalf of the All Student Congress, their peers, in an articulate and engaging manner. engaging manner. And now, board members, do you have anything to say? Any comments for anyone? Go right ahead.
Thank you, President. Um, Trustee Barone and Trustee Espinoza Jr., I want to thank you for the time that you've given to this district by being in this role. I think that more importantly than the work that you guys do up here, I've been so amazed by your advocacy outside of the board meetings. You're both incredible leaders. Um, I wish I would have been able to be such an incredible advocate as you guys are at this age, when I was your age. Um, I can, I can only imagine where you guys will be at my age, which I know you think is very old, trustee Espinoza Jr., but it's only 35. Um, inside joke for everyone else out there. I'm sorry. Um, but really, I mean, I've just been so amazed by your questions, what you advocate for. I mean, trustee Espinoza Jr., you and I have had many conversations about the state of the nation, about the work that our students are going through. Um, and trustee Barone, I just was so excited to see you cross the stage. Um, and I'm just so excited to see what you do next. I hope that you both come back to this role and run for one of our seats when you're ready in many years. I think that you would be great to be in our positions or higher, because I think that one day you could be even, you know, doing something larger. So, um, I wish trustee Barone, I know you're graduating, so I wish you the best on your next journey. Trustee Espinoza Jr., you still have one more year, correct? Yes? No? You're also graduating? You graduate? I didn't see him on the...
Yeah, he shook his hand.
Well, that's right. Yes, yes, as well. Look at that. I'm already messing up. Um, so I wish you as well, journey. Uh, I would love, of la, later, we hear what you plan to do next. I would love to hear your plans. Possible. But thank you.
Um, thank you both for doing this. You didn't have it easy. There were a lot of late nights. There were a lot of contentious, uh, comments and board times and all of it, but you did it and you did it well. And I hope that you learned something about governance. And I hope that you learned something about advocacy. And I hope that this was just a planted seed and the harvest that is to come in your future and in your life. I hope this was a good marker for you, a time marker to say, you know, this is what it meant to use your voice. I hope that we were good role models for you. I hope that we were, um, I hope that we showed you more positive than negative. And I hope that you take this on your next journey and your next step, whether you go college, career, or wherever you go, always know that your voice is important and it counts and it matters. And I think that the thing that you two did very well is you didn't stay silent. And that's the most important thing. Whether you whispered it or you screamed it, you advocated. And that is really, really important. So to that, I say thank you and congratulations. And you did it twice. Like, who does that? So thank you very much. And I really appreciate you both. I am complete.
Well, I want to thank you both again for your courage, your leadership, um, and for sitting at this table for many nights. Um, and I can't wait to see what the future brings for you guys. I'm, it's you, at your age, I was not doing this. So I thank you.
Well, thank you, first of all. Um, I'm overly impressed, not just with you, I think, with everyone who has sat on the CBO for you and expect to be as impressed with everyone who continues, because I think you guys are setting the tone and the standard for what we have to offer here in West Contra Costa. You guys are the, the role models. And hopefully, being here lets you see that you can be part of those conversations, part of the decision making, and that you guys are seen by others to say, I can do that. I think that's one thing that we want. We want more people who are willing to sit up here. And I look to you guys also because I think we, some of us were here before others. So our transition on this board, you know, has been quite a transition. So I just want to appreciate the work and dedication you guys have put into this and the late nights and the laughs at some point. But, you know, really see you that you guys can achieve and be anything you guys choose to do. But, you know, really bringing others into the space where we can also hear your voice and know that it is important, whether we agree or disagree, but we are hearing you. So thank you very much.
Dr. Moses, go ahead.
I just want to share that it's been a pleasure to work with both of you. Um, you always have the right questions to further your learning throughout this process. Uh, you've been amazing in lifting up the voices of other students in our district as you consider what you hear on this dais. I just want to share that I'm impressed with your interest in, in how this board, um, has operated over the last six months. And it's a testament to your intelligence and your pursuit of your future endeavors. So I just want to say that I am extremely impressed, um, with both of you. And I know that your futures, um, are bright as evidenced to, um, in your time on this board. So thank you. Thank you for showing up to agenda settings. And thank you for allowing me to have that time with you, um, to learn about this process and, and our, um, our district. So thank you so much. And I wish nothing but the best of luck to both of you in the future. But I think you've got this. You don't need luck. So congratulations on a successful term on the board and thank you for your service.
And I would like to thank you for your participation. The West Contra Costa Unified School District was one of the first school districts to have student board members way before us, but way back when, uh, when it was not in style to have students on the board. Um, previous board members said that this was important and they made space for, for students to, to observe and be a part of the democratic process. So, um, we were little trailblazers here. And I'm very proud of you for taking advantage of this opportunity. You got to see democracy up close and in person, um, in all of its beautiful glory, whether it be long nights, or whether it be pointed public comment, or whether it be divisive issues, or watching people, um, come to agreement on, on issues. And I'm very glad that you were here to experience that here. You guys did a great job. And I know this is an experience that you will definitely take forward into the future. And I know you will never forget it. And I can already hear, hear the conversations way back when, when I got to do this. And this is what happened. And so I think it's a really great experience. And thank you for sharing yourselves with us. Um, we do have plaques for you. So for the home audience, um, this is what we have to commemorate the service. And if it's okay, can we go down and take a picture, pictures with you? Okay. So for the audience, we'll be back in just a second. We're going to go down and take some pictures. And thank you.
President Reckler, sorry to interrupt. Would it be okay if we gave them a minute to, if they would like to say anything?
Oh, yeah. Yes, of course. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Um, I just want to say thank you for, for providing this opportunity and this space for me, uh, to share my thoughts and be able to represent my friends, my students from all around, from different high schools and everything, and also in collaboration with All Student Congress. Um, like you guys said, I'll for sure remember this, remember all the very different meetings that we had. One time we had to go back there and everything. So, um, then it's been very fun and it's been... Yeah, it's been very fun to be here, provide my opinion and my vote, and hear from public comments and be able to represent and advocate for everyone, um, in their best interests. So thank you.
Yes, just everything what, um, trustee Barone has said, um, it's been an honor and a great, which is great gratitude, just serving in this position. Years, freshman even, just sophomore, would have never seen myself being part of these kinds of spaces and taking on these kinds of roles. And it's just been not only a learning, but just a very humbling and growing experience in serving with you all and just seeing the amount of changes, um, especially the good ones, the prosperous ones. And I just want to thank you all for making this space much more safer, much more friendly, and much more comfortable for students like me and for the future students that are going to take on succeed in these positions. And along with the opportunities that me and trustee Barone have had to, um, in collaboration with All Student Congress and outside. So thank you so much for all this.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to B-12, approval of minutes. Uh, does anybody have anything on the minutes? Any corrections? Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll approve those as presented. C, we're up to consent. Does anybody have anything from the consent calendar? Go ahead, trustee Foltz, trustee Smith Foltz.
I need to pull three and 15, please.
Three and 15. Okay, got those. Anything else? Seeing none, the rest of consent except for three and 15 is approved. We'll come back to those at the end. And now we are up to D, superintendent communication. Okay, and there is, uh, there's public comment on C-10. Okay, we'll go ahead and take that.
Francisco Ortiz.
Hello again, board members. Tonight, I'm urging you to reject the district request for a CE waiver. For the fourth year in a row, our district is asking for permission to shortchange our students by failing to meet the minimum legal investment in classroom compensation. This is not a financial decision. It's a moral failure. Thirty-eight million over the last four years, when business services went over the board adopted budget by forty-two million this year alone on contractors and consultants, according to the second interim. Waiving over eleven million this year alone required classroom spending, while classrooms go unfilled, while educators leave due to burnout and low pay, is a direct attack on school stability. This is not a hardship. It's a choice. And that choice has consequences: larger class sizes, unstaffed positions, and a message that educators are not a priority. Reject this waiver. Make a different choice, one that centers justice, stability, and investment in our people who make our schools work.
Mark Mitchell.
Trustees, um, want to echo President Ortiz's, uh, uh, presentation. The classroom expense allocation waiver before you is improper. The law requires that you invest a minimum of fifty-five percent of total outgoing classroom compensation, which is compensation to educators and paraprofessional and aides directly working with our students in the classrooms. For the fourth time in a row, staff leadership is asking you to request a waiver of this requirement. Um, the law requires that if you don't meet this minimum, that that amount that's not met up to the fifty-five percent be dedicated to educator compensation in the next fiscal year. By allowing this waiver, uh, to be approved, you are shortchanging educators seven thousand five hundred dollars each in money that should be going to them and to the aides that work directly with our students. Stop shortchanging West County students. Follow the law. Reject this waiver.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we're up to D, superintendent communication.
Thank you, President Reckler. Can we bring up the presentation? I'd like to also share that following the presentation, I'll try and shorten the slides. Um, we have a presentation, um, by our student trustees to share some of their experience as well. So we'll have this presentation, um, from the superintendent's message, and then we'll pass it over to the student trustees. Thank you. Next slide. We'd like to start the presentation and take some time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community that have passed away. Patsy Sonston. We regret to inform you of the passing of retired teacher and secretary, Mrs. Patsy Sonston. Mrs. Sonston was a preschool teacher and secretary at Maritime Academy and a secretary at Harding Elementary School. She also worked as an accountant in the special education office until her retirement. She is survived by her husband and former district employee, Obert Sonston. Her daughter and current WCCUSD employee, Melissa Holton, her son, Andrew Sonstein, and her two grandsons. Memorial services will be private. In lieu of flowers, please consider donating to Shriners Children's or St. Jude's. Please join me in a moment of silence for Patsy Sonston. Thank you. Next slide. Congratulations to the class of 2025. Um, we just completed our graduation season, and it was amazing. Um, participating in the commencement exercises for all of our graduates, uh, was an honor. And we want to extend congratulations to all of the hard work that has been put into educating the students by our staff and all the hard work of our students who are now graduated. Uh, congratulations again. I also want to share our student trustees, all, all graduated this year. Uh, congratulations to student trustee Espinoza Jr., to student trustee Barone, and also, uh, to student trustee Wilson. Thank you. Next slide. Uh, appreciations. I'd like to extend, um, my gratitude and share that it has been a great honor to serve our district as the interim superintendent of schools. I was asked to share some reflections. Um, and so I'm going to attempt that in this slide. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to serve. And if you could click one more time, Rosa. There we go. Um, I just want to say that, um, being asked to step into this role and having the opportunity to lead our district and sustain district operations during this interim period... and having the opportunity to lead our district and sustain district operations during this interim period, um, has been an experience. Um, it has been a wonderful experience. First, um, just really honored to have been selected, um, to support in this manner. And I want to say that in taking this role, I initially focused on staying the course that had been set by Dr. Hirsch as we searched for a permanent superintendent. So, I'd like to share on this slide some of the, um, core values and guiding principles, um, that we focused on in the last seven months. I also, prior to sharing those, um, core values, I want to thank all of our trustees. I want to thank the cabinet, the staff, and the community. Um, you have been immensely supportive throughout these last seven months, and I've learned a lot from each of you. I want to thank you, President Reckler, for your leadership and your partnership. Working closely with you over these last seven months, um, has been delightful. Also, to trustee Smith Folds, I want to thank you for your genuine, genuine interest in me and my success. Your guidance and your care made all the difference. To trustee Gonzalez Hoy, I wanna, um, you first approached me with this opportunity, and I want to just appreciate you for, um, seeing the potential in my leadership and giving me this opportunity, and always giving sound advice and being willing to partner with me at any time. So, thank you. To trustees Hernandez and Nanyana, um, getting to know you in this capacity, learning with you as we were all new to this board, um, was really special to me. I appreciate, um, trustee Hernandez, your passion and dedication, not only to our district, but to the, all of the youth of Richmond. And Clerk Nanyana, um, your encouragement and your support has really, um, gotten me through some tough days. So, I want to thank you all for your support, um, on this learning adventure. So, I just want to share that, um, in this interim period, it was really important, not just for, um, studying our district, but continuing the course of improvement for our district, that, um, we restated our commitment to student-centered decisions. The management team was amazing. I have to say that, um, I was met with so much support in trying to, uh, lead this ship. We worked on, um, creating culture of engagement and inclusivity, establishing common goals. Shared responsibility, alignment, and accountability are all goals that we're gonna strive to continue, to, um, refine under the leadership of Superintendent Cotton. Most importantly, I think, um, as a leader, I really pride myself on leading by example, um, leading with a Y and modeling the way. Um, so integrity is at the forefront of why I do this work and who I do this work for. Some of my learnings and takeaways, um, you don't, th- this seat is, um, probably the most difficult job. And I don't think I realized the immense, um, magnitude of this job until I actually stepped in for that first day that Dr. Hirsch was gone. But what I'd like to say is, this job can be made easier with collaboration. Collaboration and cooperation, and just everybody being invested in the success, because there are important factors to consider when addressing the needs of our students and the needs of our schools. Those needs are vast, and those needs are unique in all of our different spaces. But I want to shift over to, um, brave minds, bold leaders, and big dreams. Those are the core values of our district as we move forward into, um, the strategic plan. And I just wanted to lift a few things and, um, what I've learned in this role as it pertains to our direction as a district. When it pertains to being brave and having, um, brain, brave minds, I was reminded in this position that, um, we learn something every day. It doesn't matter what position we hold, it doesn't matter, um, what our job is in this district. Everyone holds, um, the ability to learn from others, and learning actually happens even when you don't recognize it. And I just want to remind us that alone, we can do so little, and together, we can do so much. I think that as the superintendent, the cabinet, the board of trustees, the management team, and all of our staff in West Contra Costa, if we're focused and, uh, working together, um, we win. We are invested in winning, as we hear a lot, uh, but when we, when we work together, everybody wins. I also want to share that, um, being a bold leader, regardless of whether you're in management or you're not in management, it still requires leadership, courageous leadership, um, but that leadership requires a clear vision. And embracing change with a plan is required for success of leadership. So, I think I've also learned in this role that being a leader does not just mean, um, making decisions. Being a leader means working with others to ensure that everybody's following the same vision and that there's a plan in place, and that we hold each other accountable for success. I think the last thing I've learned is it's important to dream big. When we make student-centered decisions, we win. When we pursue goals together, we win. The future is in our hands, but the future is now. Our children cannot wait for us to figure it out. We have to work together collaboratively. We are a unified school district. And I think most of all, what I leave this experience with is understanding in a different light what that word unified means as we, as we, uh, really look at our district. We are the West Contra Costa Unified School District. And when we collaborate together, um, we can do a lot of great things for our students, for our community. And I just want to, again, appreciate the opportunity to learn from this view, the opportunity to, um, make student-centered decisions along with this board and with our teams. And, um, I leave this position, going back to the associate superintendent position of business services, with that same thing in mind. We make student-centered decisions, um, I do this job for children, and, um, I think that we all do this job for children. So, I just want to reflect that it's been my pleasure, um, working with everyone from this lens, from this view, in trying to make the decisions that are gonna not only sustain our district, but also move us ahead and move us toward progress. So, I look forward to working with Superintendent Cotton. As she stated, we've worked together in many capacities before. As I finished my thirtieth year in education and my eighteenth year in this district, I am very humbled to be, had to have been asked to take the seat after just sixteen months on cabinet. There was a lot to learn, um, but I, I want to just say that this has opened my eyes. I think it's made me a better, um, it's given me better vision for the future leadership that I want to see. So, thank you all. I appreciate the opportunity to share the, um, reflections, and I hope I didn't speak too long. Next slide. We want to honor our, we had a celebration, uh, last week honoring our retirees, and we wanted to also memorialize the list of retirees in this presentation. So, the, here is a list of all of the dedicated staff that have retired their service from our district this year. I extend a heartfelt thanks to each of these people on this list for everything they've contributed to our schools, to our students, and to our community. Next slide. We also want to recognize that we have some employees that come and stay. They stay for the students, they stay for progress, they stay for the community. This is a list of employees who have served in our district for twenty or more years. Very extensive list, and we are grateful for each and every staff member on this list. Next slide. Here is an additional list of current employees who have been with us for more than twenty-five years of service. So, we want to recognize them for their longevity in our district and their dedication. Next slide. Here's a second page of twenty-five-year-plus, uh, employees who have provided us service. And then, next slide. Moving on up, thirty years in our district. Um, I've been thirty years in education, so I know that is a long time. So, congratulations and thank you to all of the staff members on this thirty-plus-years-of-service list. Next slide, thirty-five years. We even move, and forty years. So, thank you to all of our dedicated employees for everything that you do for our students every day. Next slide. And this is a management team meeting where we actually, um, concluded our year, culminated, shared another successful academic year. Uh, we had awards issued to staff. We honored our retiring management leaders, and I was very grateful to have, um, a special thank you presentation at that meeting as well. So, thank you, and thank you to our management team. Next slide. Juneteenth celebration. This happened this past weekend in our city. It was a great celebration with lots of representation from West Contra Costa Unified. We had Richmond High School, West County Mandarin, and Washington Elementary School, um, providing performances for this occasion. It was a great, um, festival for families, and we were proud to be represented by our new superintendent, Cotton, trustee Hernandez, and clerk Nanyana enjoying in this historic event. Next slide. Oh, and trustee Smith Folds was there as well. Next slide. We'd like to lift up our college and career team for some of the accomplishments that they have, um, made this year with our high school students in particular. We're proud that, uh, there's been a rollout of a new, um, platform called SchoolLinks, which supports our students for their graduation plan and their future, planning for their future endeavors. And, uh, sixty-four percent of our students, um, in middle school and secondary participated in creating such a plan for their graduation. And eighty-five percent of all eighth graders completed this plan. Next slide. Also from the college and career team, um, we are proud of our dual enrollment program and our articulation courses, uh, with the Contra Costa Community College. It's a valuable opportunity for our second grade, second theory students, and, uh, we are proud of the success and the volume of students that are participating in these courses. Next slide. Summer school. We, um, have summer school underway, and we wanted to also highlight some of the special programs under our summer school umbrella this year. There's summer CTE classes where students at Kennedy High are participating in a constructions trade initiative. Um, we also have a health pathway summer course, uh, with dual enrollment. Richmond High students and Contra Costa students are, um, learning about public health over the summer. Next slide. Uh, just a list of our summer school classes, uh, that we'd like to share with you. We're busy this summer, ensuring that, um, we have lots to offer our students who are enriching their academics over the summer. Next slide. We'd like to announce that, uh, West Contra Costa Unified School District is participating in the summer meal program. Our food services department makes meals available at different sites throughout the school year. You can, uh, log on to our website, wccusd.net/foodservices for a list of these locations. Next slide. We are launching our new website this summer, and we are very excited about it. There will be messaging going out to community members to announce the features and improve navigation, um, within our new site. And so, uh, we will be updating you at each board meeting over the summer of the progress made with the rollout. And we want to make note of if there are issues or you need help finding something on the new website, you can contact our communications department for support. Next slide. We do have committees continuing during the summer, CBOC. Catch a CBOC meeting in July. To learn a little bit more about that committee, um, we encourage you to check this out. And if you're interested in joining the committee, uh, please see their website for more information. Next slide. I want to announce that while summer has just begun, we do want to keep our eyes on the next school year. School's gonna resume on August nineteenth. Uh, we would like for all of our families and students to have a wonderful summer break, but we are really excited to welcome you back on August nineteenth. And that concludes the superintendent report, and I would like to pass it over to our student trustees who are going to share their experience, um, for this board period. So, we'll bring up the presentation, and, um, again, while we bring that up, I just want to, again, uh, welcome Superintendent Cotton and thank you for this amazing experience. Um, yeah, looking forward to it.
I'm sorry, can I ask you to pause just for a second?
Sorry, just wondering if we could, uh, if we, we wanted to ask questions on the report now or after the student trustees?
Got it. What would people like to do?
I have a question.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Um, Superintendent Moses, could you give our community a couple of pointers? As a former teacher, a parent, and a, um, principal, what are some of the things that parents and students could do to keep their, you know, their skills fresh? Like, especially around, would you advise them to continue to read for thirty minutes a day? What are, just a couple of pointers, would, if you could? I'm complete.
Great. Thank you for the question. Yes, uh, we encourage reading every day. You don't get a summer off from reading. By reading each day, you're increasing your vocabulary, you're sharpening your comprehension skills, and reading is a great way to take an adventure. Regardless of what book you select, you will learn something new or have some enjoyment from, um, the storyline of the book. So, please do read over the summer. I'd also like to encourage parents to limit screen time over the summer and allow your students, I'm sorry, allow your children to experience the outdoors. Give them, um, take day trips so that they can learn not only from books, but also from the environment and from our social structures and different experiences. So, we encourage you to get out and explore this summer. And not only explore, but also have conversations with your children about what they see, what they learn, any questions they maybe have if they're entering into, um, and if you, if they have opportunities to experience new things this summer. And finally, I would say, we have a ton of online resources. We do want screen time limited, but I do want to point out that on our Clever Portal, there are lots of academic, um, programming, um, apps available for free where students can, um, continue to practice their math skills, there's opportunities to write, there's even opportunities to have books read aloud to you online. We also encourage you to go back to those old-school, traditional methods of practicing. Your computation and writing, keeping a journal over the summer can really home in your, help you to sharpen your writing skills and ensure that we don't slip into that summer slide in which we have not practiced the skills that we learned in the school year. Not doing, uh, not practicing your academics for the two months of summer could result in students, um, losing some of what they've learned. So, please continue to sharpen those skills and, um, engage in opportunities to do that as often as possible. And thank you for the question.
Thank you, President. Uh, Dr. Moses, this might be a difficult question. So, if you prefer to email us, that's fine too, but I want to give you an opportunity to also, if you had one piece of advice or recommendation to the board, what for, for this coming school year, what would it be? I see some laughs because you probably have like ten, but if not more, but if you're top, if you had one for us to really think about.
Way to put me on the spot. Um, I see the commitment from the board to lead our, lead our district, um, towards improvements, right? I think it's no, we have a lot of work to do, not only within our schools, but within our system. And I think my advice to the board, um, would be to continue to have the necessary conversations in order to align, um, board values and district values and move forward a plan of change. We don't get better without having a plan and without recognizing with input from other, um, community spaces, school spaces, staff input, but learning what's needed and creating a plan to ensure that, um, we're working towards what we all agree we need. And I think that would just be my, my recommendation. Everybody here leads with passion, you lead with purpose, but we also need to lead with a plan. So.
Thank you for that. President, that's my only question.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, now I guess we can move to the student report.
Um, okay, so I'll start it off. We're gonna be talking about the DL cap and ASC, and then me and trustee Espinoza and I's experience. So, let me explain. And so, the All Student Congress twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. So, All Student Congress, which was, or which is a youth government group with the intent and goal to advocate for the student body of WCCUSD and provide input and feedback. and provide input and feedback from voices of the student body. This year, All Student Congress was split into three subcommittees. Number one, which was student engagement. Number two, safety and belonging. And three, collaborative leadership and decision. February 5th, 2025, newly appointed students participated in their first ASC meeting of the year with the addition of the DL cap. And so our goals for this year were to focus on student voice and discussing support for at-risk or disadvantaged youth. Ensure that the student voice ASC be considered with DL cap recommendations and that recommendations go to board and district administration, where feedback and information is received and given. And the why, centering real student voice and real conversations, consultation to collaboration, and a reliable feedback loop between the board and students. And so what did it look like? Inside the meetings, students which ranged from grade seven to 12, represented all of the WCCSD's middle and high schools in discussing not only agenda discussion and action items, but about their everyday lives in the classroom and how these experiences shape their lives outside of school as academic achievers. ASC student representatives learned and developed leadership skills and project management through discussion-based elimination and merging, along with deep critical thinking and discussion. Student trustees, trustee Espinoza Jr., Wilson, and I acted as guides for each committee, ensuring not only the ASC student representatives have the freedom to practice their skills and talents as student leaders, but to mentor in barriers that may have been encountered. Students collectively will report on their discussions and next steps to ensure all action items and desired outcomes are met and exceeding expectations and standards.
Thank you. So what was great about this experience for All Student Congress in collaboration with the DL cap, and with the DL cap, excuse me, is that these recommendations were presented to the board and at the very front of the superintendent as well. And what makes these recommendations even more unique was that these are all from the exact words of all the student representatives from each of the subcommittees. So none of these were changed, edited, or even written by anyone in charge or supervision. This was all the students' work. So we wanted to really bring that authentic student voice at the very front of the board in these recommendations. And below you can see which highlight represents. For example, the green represents if the recommendation was implemented. Purple represents implemented with modifications. And yellow represents if the implementation's already in place. Next slide. And then in this slide, of course, is the final recommendations that were made on the last subcommittee recommendations. Next slide. And then we'll be heading over to our experience. So pass it back to trustee Barone.
So from my experience in ASC and as a student trustee member, representation and advocacy, being able to represent my school, Richmond High School personally, in All Student Congress and here at board meetings, was amazing and I felt proud to represent. I got to represent my school's site and values as a student trustee during the votings and discussions and being able to hear public comment. And also during my subcommittee meetings, outside of ASC, we were able to schedule our own meetings where we just talked. And I remember talking, sorry, talking with my fellow two ASC members who were still middle schoolers. And it was great to see advocacy in their age and level. And yeah. And so then the knowledge of local and school government. Before being a student trustee, I was a regular high school student. So being able to be here and see how decisions in our school were made was really amazing to see. And it did spark more interest in me with agenda review meetings. So on Tuesdays before our Wednesday board meetings, I had, me and trustee Espinoza Jr., we had agenda review meetings with Dr. Moses, and they were really helpful to be able to understand the materials that we were going to discuss in board meetings. And then board meetings, going into meetings, I did feel a little unprepared coming in, but then I, having trustee Espinoza Jr. was amazing and was very reassuring. And meeting all of you guys as trustees was really amazing to see you guys. You guys were really role models for me and it was great to see your initiative and leadership in your community and how much you take pride and want to better it.
So for me personally, this was a tremendous learning experience, not only just as a student trustee, but just even as a student and just a community member within this district that I so hold dearly in my heart. Once again, I was just much of a regular student as well myself. So I had little to almost completely no understanding of how governance works, especially in our local level and in our education system. But learning these things, not only from a local, but even broadening these understandings and learning from, to a state level and collaborating with much more other student leaders and other, of course, the administrators in our cabinet and along with the rest of the trustees on this board has been not only a great experience, but also just a flourishing one. And just serving about a year has not only, once again, just brought in my experience and understanding of all this, the functions of governance in this district, but it's just thrown me into so many environments that not only I would not, not see myself in, but even see myself getting out of, or even having a comprehensive and resulting thought of what I can build on from these experiences and exposures. And it has just been nothing but humility and growth within not only my experience as a student, student trustee, but it has also just deepened my greater passion into law and to our policy and governance and all across the state to hopefully a national level. So yes. With that being said, that is the conclusion of our presentation. The next slide, ask for questions. So I'm opening the board if there are any other questions you have. Thank you.
Great. Does anybody have questions for the trustees? Trustee Smith Folds?
What's one or two things, what's one or two things that we could do as a board to make it easier, better, do different for the next group of trustees that come in?
I would say, in, given my experience and just seeing how things can change in such an instant and everything, along with the variety, the diverse variety audience of the students that we serve, I would say be more engaging. It's not that I say it in a very blunt way, as in like a very blunt manner, but the engagement that you have provided for me and the rest of the student trustees that I've served along with has really made this a very comfortable experience and one that we can sit back and not only relax, but with confidence in not only stating our opinions and our advocacy for our students, but even learning as we advocate for these students. So definitely, definitely brought in the engagement within the next incoming student trustees. And that's all I have to say.
It kind of goes into what trustee Espinoza said, but guidance a little bit. Definitely when I came in here, I didn't really know how my first board meeting was going to look and I didn't know what the procedures were going to be like. So I would say definitely guidance. I don't know how that would be, whether it be like a meeting before to explain to trustees how this is going to go step by step, or whether to just say it during a board meeting. But I would definitely say more guidance. I think it'll bring out more advocacy in students and make it more engaging.
Could I ask you a follow-up? For guidance, for example, running through the Rosenberg's rules? Like running through, is that an example of that? Or an example of saying that you guys can make a motion and you can second? And you can, little things like that parliamentary things as guidance as well?
Definitely parliamentary things too, because this is like, this is kind of first, my first experience with school government and how parliamentary procedures go. And also the materials that are being covered in the meetings. As a student, I am a student first. And so my daily life before was, you know, just learning history and math. And so coming in here and learning about decisions about the financial policy and stuff, I think more guidance on what is actually being discussed.
My final question to both of you, would you find it a benefit for us to make space for you guys to do site visits that we do? We do site visits. Like there's some things that we as board members do, like you can't go to closed session, right? But what can you do that we do as board members, like events, site visits, having conversations when we do these, when we go to PAC meetings, right? We go to parent engagement meetings like that. Would you find that beneficial if we opened up the engagement and the inclusion to be things like that? Would that be something that you're talking about too? I'm complete.
Absolutely. One of the things, when I have talked not only with just students that, and friends that I go to school with, but also student leaders across this whole state, that is one of the things that they so are eager to, is that they are ambitious. They are eager to take on these spaces where a lot of the leaders within their district or even the state, they take on to engage with more of the community. A lot of them suggest even such as like student-to-student symposiums or summits. So that way you can really get that understanding from a student because the language of an adult may not be as clear as to a student. And again, these are people your age, so there's that understanding culturally and even critically as well. I do also would like to recommend, and the earlier question is that one thing that was suggested, not only to me, but came as a thought as well, was that a lot of the language that is used within the board meetings, such as the acronyms, abbreviations, and everything, there should, there should be recommendation or consideration for a cheat sheet, which basically like has these lists of names and what they stand for and like bulletin points of what they consist of and what it references to and how it interferes or intervenes in certain meetings. Like in this scenario, this is what happens, this and that. Like a guide, something that they could read in advance or even just throughout the meeting. So that way if they have anything they need to go to, they can just look through it real quick. But yeah.
Yeah, it's just ditto. Like I didn't know what a full-time equivalent was. And when I saw the acronym in my first meeting, I was like, okay, I don't know. I had to Google it. So definitely more guidance and a cheat sheet would be great.
Anybody else? Okay, well, thank you. That was an excellent report and I appreciate the, the feedback. And we will look into that. Do student trustees, do they attend an agenda setting before they, before they onboard the first time? Or do they come to the first meeting and then do they start agenda setting? And is there, is there any training manuals or welcome type of process?
So traditionally, I believe there's an onboarding. This particular session, there was not an onboarding because of the delayed vote. And it was very, they were appointed very close to the first meeting. But I think moving forward, yes, the onboarding will continue.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, good. That was great advice. Thank you. Again, thank you for your participation. It was great and great report. Okay, moving on now. We are up to our action items. E1, student discipline is the first one. And so I have the wording. Give me just a second to find it. Okay, so for this student discipline, this is, the motion will be, if someone would like to make it, or I can make it, is to clear the expulsion for case number 242503 and readmit the student to the West Contra Costa Unified School District.
Are you making the motion, President?
And is there a second?
A second.
All right, so I made it, you're the second? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, there's no discussion on this item, so we'll just go straight to the vote. Student trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Student trustee Barone?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Clerk Aniana?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
And I mean, yes, so the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we are now up to E2, adoption of the 2025-2026 Local Control Accountability Plan.
Thank you, President Reckler. We have associate superintendent of teaching and learning Catherine Acosta Verproskis online to provide and introduce this item.
Great, thank you so much. Good evening, President Reckler, clerk Aniana, trustees, superintendent Moses, superintendent Cotton, and members of our community. My apologies for not being able to be there in person. On June 4th, I shared the 2025-2026 Local Control Accountability Plan, or LCAP, as part of our annual public hearing. Next slide. For those of the public who are listening and missed the hearing, the LCAP is a three-year roadmap that aligns our goals with our budget and is developed through ongoing engagement with our educational partners. The full LCAP and annual update is attached and includes all of our actions, budget, and program metrics. This is again publicly available, both attached to the agenda and on our website. We've also provided a bilingual executive summary that's a bit more accessible and shorter to read. We've included our feedback from the DL caps and PAC committees, along with today's documents. Next slide. So on June 4th, we provided a very high-level overview and we've really focused on the implementation effectiveness and the proposed changes for the LCAP. And tonight, we are seeking approval for the plan. And I'm going to be reviewing our required local dashboard indicators, as well as I'm going to be providing an update on the changes to our LCAP since the June 4th presentation. Next slide. So tonight, we are presenting our California Dashboard Local Indicators. These local indicators are based on priorities for the local control funding formula and that the state doesn't actually collect data for. So our local agencies are responsible for self-assessing and reporting out our performance based on the indicators district-wide. Next slide. And so you can see that what we self-report on are basic services for condition, implementation of state standards, parent and family engagement, school climate, and our access to a broad course of study. And we can receive a met, a not met, or a not met in two-year designation. And if you might recall, last year, while we did meet our local indicators, it read as not met because we didn't meet that July 1st deadline for approval of the Board of Education LCAP. Next slide. And so for this year, for priority one, basic teacher instructional materials facilities, we did meet standard with 100% of our basic needs being met. For priority two, implementation of state academic standards, we also met standard with an average score of initial implementation. For priority three, parent and family engagement, we met the standard with four items in the exploration and research phase, two items in the beginning development phase, and then six items in the initial implementation phase. And then for priorities six and seven, this is a reflection that's provided by our district. We did meet the standard. Priority six focuses on school climate and really provides an analysis of our suspension efforts, as well as how we're doing on the California Healthy Kids Survey. And then for priority seven, access to a broad course of study, we have a reflection of highlights of how our district is ensuring equitable and rigorous access across all student groups. Next slide. And so since our last presentation for the LCAP, we did have an opportunity to engage with our Contra Costa County Office of Ed and made all of the required changes and feedback that they provided us. This included some support in just correcting some clarity and quality of our metrics, as well as just overall effectiveness prompts. We also addressed the requirement to align our learning recovery emergency block grant specific metrics that needed to be part of the strategy to make sure that everything was connected and clearly reported. We also heard really loud and clear that we're all aligned, that expanding our newcomer program is, is a top priority for our district. And so we're identifying how we might be able to really leverage our Title III funds and how we might be able to use our existing staff to be able to expand newcomer program supports at King Elementary School. supports at King Elementary School and potentially others. And then we've also been able to update both in Goal 1 and 3 and 5, our most, uh, local indicator data. Now that we've, um, we've got those, uh, final numbers for middle school dropout rates, as well as our most up-to-date iReady ELA and math data across the district. And so I'd like to review that next. Next slide. Okay, so this year for iReady Math, um, you might recall that our big goal has been to increase the percentage of students scoring early on grade level or above by 9%. And we're really excited to show that we've made real progress with all student groups being able to exceed this goal. Across grades K through 8 in mathematics, we showed a 23.3% growth, um, in annual progress. In grades 9 to 11, the growth was even stronger with 34.3, signaling really accelerated academic gains in high school for math. Notable, we saw Filipino high school students led the way with 38.8 and white students in K8 also showed strong growth. Students that identify as two or more races also demonstrated really consistent high performance across the grade spans. And, um, our socio-economically disadvantaged students in grade 9 through 11 really had a powerful growth with 24.3. And our foster youth hit a 20% goal, which is really exciting because these, um, were our focus groups. And so this level of growth really puts us on a strong path to reaching our goal and our vision in mathematics. And we're excited to be able to, um, align high-quality instruction and data results with that. Next slide. So for reading, we have the same goal of wanting to increase by 9% by end of year. Um, our iReady reading data also shows meaningful progress here, particularly in our lower grades K through 8, with all student groups exceeding our goal. And it also does highlight clear opportunities for continued growth, particularly at the high school level where you can see that four student groups didn't, uh, meet the goal with one actually going in the opposite direction. So in grades K through 8, we were able to reach 17.2% growth, um, for students. The growth particularly for Asian students, um, and students that identify of two or more races and Filipino students again was really, um, exciting. We saw promising gains with our socio-economically disadvantaged students, which is one of the largest populations for our district with 16%. Again, indicating that targeted supports are really helping to move, um, student groups forward. At the high school level, we saw, um, 9 to 11, 12.7% growth with Asian students, um, and Filipino students particularly showing the most gain. Hispanic and Latino students grew by 13.4% and foster youth showed a 12% increase. Again, evidence that interventions are working. That said, there are some important areas that we need to dig into some more. We saw that growth among our African-American students in 9 to 11 was modest, while they met the goal, um, at 9.5%. We're seeing other groups grow, um, at a faster rate. And so we're going to dig into that a bit more. We also saw that students identifying two or more races only grew by 6.3. Um, and we saw white students actually in high school decline. So we're going to be doing some more digging to be better, um, prepared to support those students. And then we also see that English learners and students with disabilities in high school, uh, posted lower gains, which is again a signal for us that we need to tailor strategies and literacy supports in secondary to better align to our student needs. Next slide. So this data for us really confirms that our strategies, particularly around Goal 3, are driving us in the right direction. Um, we know that Goal 1 and 2 really, um, are in service of Goal 3 because as a district, our goal is student achievement. And so we're excited to be able to be headed in the right direction. And we know that, um, these strong gains are focused, um, and are highlighted because of the goals that we've created through these out, through the, um, goals written in this, eh, LCAP. And so, um, we would be very excited if we could, um, receive, um, an approval. Next slide. Of the LCAP Goals and Strategies and Actions, um, as described on the June 4th, um, hearing date. We believe that this reinforces our, um, clear direction and commitment to coherence, uh, equity and instructional excellence represented by these goals. And that concludes my presentation for tonight. We did attach all of the slides that were presented at the last hearing, um, including the, um, added, uh, slides at the end that do have our, um, acronyms guide. Because I agree, uh, that, that there is a lot of acronyms in our presentations, um, as well as additional data to support the growth of other goals. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation. Are there any questions? Go ahead. Just you Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Acosta Verpreskus. When I saw 97 slides, I was like, oh gosh. Uh, so that was, that was really well done. I did want to ask you if you could maybe share with us a little bit about that the 10% decrease in ELA for white students specifically. It's really great to see the positive change on, you know, the rest of our students. But I was just curious from in, with your, you know, your opinion, why do we see a 10% decrease on white students specifically this year? It's like the first time I think I've ever seen our white students decrease, um, you know, compared to other groups.
Yeah. Thank you for that question. It's definitely something that, um, you know, made us pause as a team and our, we're doing a lot more digging around it to discover what's going on. One of the things that really came up as we had conversations, um, with school leaders and, um, with teachers, and you've heard it in public comment, is that, um, this last administration of iReady comes at a really hard time, especially for our secondary students as they take AP testing, as they finish state testing, especially for those 11th graders. Um, and there's some serious, uh, fatigue that happens. Um, we don't want to discount the data. We do believe that there's more digging that needs to happen. But for that level of analysis, we really need to dig in and study where that 10% uh, decrease is coming from. Is it a particular school? Is it a particular grade level? So that we can really uncover how we might be able to do those, um, supports. So we, that is our summer work. Um, our team is really excited to be able to use this data to do instructional walkthroughs as a team, where there are classrooms that are really outperforming. We want to go learn where there are classrooms and schools that need more support. We want to give that support. And so as soon as I find out, I will let you know.
And then my second question is a question also a request to you and the President and Superintendent Cotton. Would it be possible for us to also get a presentation on exactly what you just mentioned? The schools and classrooms that, um, have seen such a large growth for African-American and English language learner students specifically, and call this out because those two groups are, that has, was historically, have actually usually gone backwards. So would it be possible to bring some of those schools and hear the highlights of the work that they're doing so that we can all learn from their success?
Absolutely. In the past, what we've done is we've brought schools who have, um, demonstrated overall growth. So you might recall, we brought Shannon and Nystrom. And I think it's a great idea to do a really focused look on our focal student groups. So bringing both schools that are doing, um, you know, a great job in supporting our English learners and our African-American students with local data, because that will be able to drive, um, the actions that we take as a district to support these students.
Thank you so much. That's it, President. Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions?
I have one question. With all the financial challenges we're facing, um, and declining enrollment and just the cost of things going up, um, what's our plan to make sure that the LCAP stays sustainable and it doesn't collapse within, you know, the next year or two?
I can take us first stab at it and then, um, I'll speak to program. I don't know if anybody wants to speak to budget, um, which will likely be next. But, um, when I really think about the heart of our LCAP, um, it's really centered and focused around, um, ensuring that we're delivering high-quality instruction, that we're using data to drive that instruction and that we're providing all of our students with the social emotional support that they need to be able to thrive. Most of those things don't have to cost money, right? And so, um, yes, it's really helpful to have a lot of additional dollars to be able to make that happen. But, um, I stand confident and knowing that if we really focus on those practices and those adult changes that need to, um, be implemented for us to grow, that even through these fiscal challenges, we'll continue to be able to make growth.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain the motion to adopt the LCAP. For the 2025. Totally forgot. I'm like spacing out here. Okay, public comment. Yes, let's go ahead.
Skye Nelson.
Thank you. Skye Nelson, teacher and parent, Elsirito High School, uh, Ms. Acosta Verpreskus. Thank you for that presentation. And I was part of the, a few of the meetings, so I, I feel a little invested and, and appreciated knowing what was going on in the LCAP meetings. I want to advocate for one of my teachers at my school, uh, Mr. Decker in the Theater Department. We have, uh, my question is for Ms. Acosta. Are, do we know that the, the administrators at our schools are, are communicating with, with your team about the funding that's available? There, I know VAPA, Visual and Performing Arts was a important part of the emphasis for next year. And I know that all, Mr. Decker is struggling to get his, uh, desired set of classes for theater. We have a great theater program. We, we put on Arsenic and Old Lace. We have a tech program that actually built the set, a two-story set, quite impressive. And two, we'd like to have two Theater 1 programs and a Theater Advanced Program. So in order to do that, it requires, uh, investment and, uh, LCAP seems like a great source for that. So please make sure that the, the schools know about this resource. Thank you.
Ceylon Harrison, please unmute yourself.
Thank you for the presentation and I just want to say thank you for how you've been running the meetings. This school year, you have been very informative. You, it's been different and I don't still feel confident in what we're getting, the information we're receiving. But I do like the process that you have set up and that you have been implementing to make intentional effort to engage parents and community in the process and students. So thank you for that. It's very refreshing not to feel like we have to fight to be a part of it. But I would like a lot more transparency, um, around the information we are receiving. I'm complete.
That concludes public comment for this item.
Thank you. Okay, with that, seeing no further questions, I'll entertain the motion for adoption of the 25-26 LCAP Plan.
President, I'll move the approval for the 2025-2026 LCAP.
Is there a second?
Smith-Voltz, second.
Trustee Smith-Voltz is the second. Uh, any comments? So I have a comment. I just want to thank you all and the team for a much improved year, much improved process, much, much better engagement, better metrics, better plan. I mean, it's really, I really thank you very much for hearing me last year and making just unbelievable improvement in the document. So I, I really appreciate it and I look forward to continued success. And with that, we'll go to the vote. Student trustee Espinoza Jr.
Yes.
Student trustee Varon.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Agnana.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Trustee Smith-Voltz.
Smith-Voltz, yes.
And Ami Yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on now to D3, Adoption of the 2025-2026 Annual Budget.
Thank you, President Reckler. Mr. Hart, this is your item.
Good evening, uh, to the members of the Board and ERIM Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to address this. Tonight, the budget that was presented on June 4th is before you for adoption. The only change in the submittal of materials is that the, um, I just lost the name of it. The, thank you. The criteria and, uh, standards is now included. You'll find that on page 132 of the budget document. It runs for, uh, additional 30 pages through 162. There are additional documents that are attached to this, um, submittal. They are the documents that, uh, essentially complete the submission of staff to the Board for adoption, uh, of a proposed budget that would then become upon adoption, uh, the operating budget for the school year beginning July 1st, 2025, running through, uh, June 30th of 2026. Should you have any questions, we stand before you, uh, to address those. Also, I want to thank, uh, members of staff for their contributions to this point in time. And, uh, we'll bring the formality of this to a close, at least at this side of the podium, uh, unless there are questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I did want to ask if you could address the issue that UTR mentioned tonight a few times about the 50% rule for teachers. If you could talk about why did we not meet the threshold and, um, the reasons, uh, why and, or, or if we would have, depending on what would have been taken in consideration in the budget.
So, uh, thank you for the question. And just a point of clarification, I just want to make sure we're talking about item C10, the CEA waiver.
Yes, um, yeah, I brought it up now because I think it has context with the overall budget. But if you feel like it should have been another item.
Nope, nope. I just want to make sure and there, and, uh, respectfully would just say the threshold for, uh, Unified School District is 55%. And so just, uh, for the purpose of the record, if you will. In, in short, waivers are provided by the California Department of Education across any number of activities. This, um, practice, the, the idea that, uh, the State Board of Education, operating, uh, through county offices of education, uh, would have a process for vetting waivers is to ensure that there is not an undue hardship on an individual school district in complying with the spirit of the law. This is one of those instances. The school district, uh, many school districts, West Contra being among them, have difficulty, uh, meeting, uh, this requirement when a school district receives a significant amount of one-time funding. We have a unique circumstance. And, uh, just to acknowledge, uh, some of the points that were made, I want to just cite a couple of numbers. First off, I want to acknowledge that the percent is below the 55. Indeed, it is, uh, for the school year 23-24, and I want to be really clear about this. That is the year we're talking about. We're not talking about the current school year that will end in June 30th. This is for the school year that began July 1st of 23, running through June 30th of 24. Just a quick aside, I imagine that we will be back before you for a waiver for the school year that is ending now at some point in the next six months. And the reason being is that the COVID relief dollars that flowed into the state, through the state and became available to school districts changed the denominator to how it is this, uh, this is, uh, this calculation is performed. In 2020-21, so the 21 fiscal year, the expenses of the district that were. the expenses of the district that were qualified for education costs in the classroom totaled $322.4 million. It's a sizable amount. Today, for the year ending June 30th of 24, that amount is $431 million, an increase of almost $111 million. That is the amount that is the denominator of how much we spent on total expenses. The amount that went into the classroom, this is the numerator, in that same baseline school year, the fiscal year, school year 21, there was 172.7 million. In that year, the percent of the district was 53.56. That was the first year a waiver was sought in this period. This year, the number is 52.36, a difference of two tenths of a percent. But the amount that we are spending in the classroom as determined by this form is $225.9 million. It's an increase of $53.2 million that has occurred in a four-year period. It's not to say, to make light of the difference, the delta, what would it take for us to get to 55% would be an additional $11.2 million. If our waiver was either not approved by you or a pound, if I may presume, passage by the Board of Education, not approved by the county, in the subsequent year, the school district would be expected to expend those dollars in classroom-related expenses. To be clear, that bucket of what is classroom-related expenses is not always going to go into salaries of teachers. It is a large composition. It is also the case that I would expect that in the next handful of years, perhaps not as soon as 2526, but it wouldn't surprise me, we will no longer need the waiver. The use of the COVID relief dollars, as you may recall, those dollars had to be expended by June 30th of 24. The district did comply with that. So as the balances, the one-time balances have been fully expended, most of those were of a restricted nature. And the unrestricted dollars then are, that perhaps we, if you could use this terminology, were spared as we were able to shift those costs into restricted funds. As we have shown, the budget for 2627 and 2728 has a combined deficit approaching $60 million. I highly doubt that we will be seeking a waiver at that time. This is just a unique circumstance, and yes, it has been for a series of years. But the ESSER relief funds that we received, the COVID relief dollars, ESSERS 1, 2, and 3, caused for a very unique circumstance.
So, so to summarize, what I heard you say was that because we got one-time monies through ESSER and through COVID funds, that increased our overall budget. And that money was spent in various ways, which decrease our percentage on the budget for this, for salaries, because the overall budget grew. And that money needed to be used for other things. Is that correct?
With one caveat, the money is, so as you might imagine, the California Department of Ed has some pretty strict guidelines on what, how you account for this. My only footnote to your comment is the dollars that were spent in the classroom as opposed to dollars that were spent out of the classroom. So in the context of the pandemic, we spent a lot of money in trying to keep our community safe. That's probably the easiest way to put it. The PPNE and other related expenses changed the nature of how we did, not how we did the computation, but the relative weight of those expenses, classroom as opposed to non-classroom.
So as you mentioned it to our budget deficit, but also because the ESSER funds are going away completely. By the time we're approving the 2627 budget, at that point, we shouldn't be applying for waivers because we would be back to what is just our general fund, unless the state gives us additional one-time monies in that budget, but technically, if not.
I think the simplest way to answer that is correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That was my last question.
Does anybody else have questions? Go right ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted a quick rundown on the consulting. Can you explain the system of the evaluation of how consulting contracts are handled and evaluated?
Sure. The, let me, do you have it with you? I don't have the form. You're talking about in the consent agenda items where there is the valuation of the contracts. And I don't have that in front of me, so let me try to do it off the top. On an annual basis, the departments, the programs for which there are contracted services are required to go through a process to rate the vendor and essentially assign a grade as to whether or not the services for which or the products for which someone was engaged are in fact satisfactory, meeting expectations, if you will, superior to what we would have expected or otherwise deficient. The intent is to ensure that we are getting value for the dollars that are being appropriated and the contracts are being executed.
My next question added on to this is, are there any more, are there any detail as to the exact amount expenditures that are used on certain contractors, on the vendors, or any sort of consulting?
Not that I'm aware of. And I'm going to restate your question to make sure we're on the same page. I am not aware of any board policy or or requirement in the ed code that would limit the amount to which a individual contractor is awarded. I think there is certainly a measure of prudence that district leadership would apply. But the comfort we draw, if you will, comes through the process by which we make those selections. It could be that you see a vendor receive a preponderance of work. But I would argue that in that instance, it's because that vendor won a competition vis a vis a request for proposals. And we would consider their proposal to be highest value, which is to say we get the best for the lowest cost.
Okay, and just my last question. Thank you. For my last question, I did a little like messing around with the budget and everything, comparing them to our district, our district neighbors all across the Bay Area. There is an average spending of the 5% of their budget is being spent on consulting. Doing a little bit of the math, we have about 13, roughly 13, 14% of our budget being spent into consulting or professional. In this case, like the expenditures on that. I don't know the exact name on top of my head, but it is on that realm. It's, I guess my question would be, where does the, based on the other issues, where does the extra little 7% to 8% come from in that realm? That's all.
I've heard some of the trustees speak to you about your future. Let me invite you to join my staff. It's a wonderful question. What I would suggest to you is, and I'm not trying to be evasive, it depends. So let me give you an example. I think most folks know that I worked for the Los Angeles Unified School District. They had a very sizable legal office. At the same time, we hired numerous attorneys outside of the school district to provide legal services for the type of coverage, the expertise that an individual attorney might bring, that for which we did not want to staff. Let's compare that to West Contra Costa. We do not have an attorney on staff. I don't know when you're comparing to those other school districts, whether or not, and I'm just making an example up of whether or not they have an internal general counsel or not. That would be an example of why you might see a disparity between what is a percent, call it 10% as opposed to 5%. There are many expertises, that's an odd phrase I grant you, that range in a school district. Legal, accounting, and I'm pointing at those that are away from the classroom for which school districts uniformly have to contract. You'll see that in risk management. We have multiple vendors that we work with for insurance, for other related expertise, auditors, what have you. Without doing a side-by-side, I'm only going to be able to offer conjecture. What I can say is that the prices we pay for those services, I believe to be competitive. I believe that we can always improve, but I'm not seeing a disproportionate amount just based on that. I also know that in some of our positions, we have had difficulty filling those. And so in the instance where we have critical need, it is not an uncommon approach. It is not unique to West Contra that a school district or an entity that is suffering for a chronic shortage will look to hire outside. We do that within special education as relates to, paraprofessionals, thank you for getting words tonight. So again, you know, you would, I would suggest that what we would do, we being you and I, now that you're working for us, we would create a matrix. We would try to identify by program, by department. We would try to create a means by which we are looking at what is the numerator and what is the denominator. In the example of legal, it's going to be zero internal, 100% external. That's going to skew our numbers. It's that kind of analytic that we need to do to be able to more completely answer your question and determine whether there's something that requires greater exploration.
Thank you. That, I, it was just an interesting take. I'm just messing around, but completely understand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there other questions? Can I go first before you go? Okay. If I may, so I'd like to talk about special ed and your assumptions for the special ed increase. So for 22 to 23 and to 24, 25, sped expenses increased about 29%, while the total spend enrollment increased only 1.2%. So we're obviously spending more per student versus expanding the program. So in, so if in 25, 26, and 26, 27, your projections are off, that would obviously be not ideal. So I'm just curious about how you ended up with the numbers that you did in the multi-year projection and your confidence behind them.
I don't know that we have any more positions to offer, President Reckler, but I appreciate the question, and if we have any vacancies, we'll bring you in. Not to make light of this, it's, the point you make is an astute one, and it's a complicated answer. You have seen in the first and second interim comments from staff about the escalating costs related to sped. The amount, off the top of my head, not that long ago was, I'll say $60 billion circa 2020, 2018, somewhere in that neighborhood. We are now cresting $100 million out of the general fund, and this is the general fund contribution to the district's total sped budget. That is to say, what is, what it is costing the district beyond those dedicated resources that come from the state and federal government. It is the case, those percentages you cite are accurate. They have been dramatic. They are of concern. It is also the case that, to the questions that trustee Gonzalez hoy voiced, some of the rationale for why those increased during the period of 2020, 21 to now also had to do with the utilization of one-time funding to try to impact positively those students with greatest need. With those dollars essentially tapering off, we have an obligation then to also, if you will, plateau the expense, the growth that is occurring there. It is a place, you ask what is a confidence interval, if you will? I would say reasoned. Your conclusion is correct. In the absence of additional revenues or other expenses coming in lower than they are budgeted, should the trajectory of the sped budget in total, which would require more general fund contribution increase as it has historically, we will have a problem. It is incumbent upon us to look at the costs embedded within special education. Transportation is a primary area. The ratios by which we staff is an area that requires further examination. The utilization of, many of these questions are playing off of each other. The contracted services that are instrumental to our service delivery, particularly in the face of the vacancies we have faced, is a significant driver of those expenses. It is an expectation that those will be further examined and pared down. I can commend Mr. Fleishman for his efforts to, on a year-over-year basis, look at the transportation expenses and help in lowering the costs we were paying. But it is the case that we are still seeing increased costs related to transportation, albeit they're at a lower level. That kind of initiative, that kind of reduction has to be part and parcel of the initial months in our next fiscal year, our next school year, in order for those projections now embedded in the budget for 2526 to become real.
Okay, thank you. So in the multi-year projection that was presented on June 4th, I think we were looking at like a $40 million deficit over the NYPD, which is the multi-year projection. I can't exactly remember. There was supposed to be like $5 million additional from the state based on their budget, back and forth with legislature, governor, all of that junk. So first, did that happen? And then second, you know, it's not awesome to have a minus $35 million budget. What steps will happen now for the district to look at that deficit and figure out how to close it up?
A number of points I want to make. First, your recollection of June 4th is accurate. In the last year of the multi-year plan, and to refresh the audience, the requirement is we present to you a budget for the preceding fiscal year. That's what you have before you, the 202526 budget. We also have to do a forecast for the two subsequent years. So in fiscal year 2027-28, there is a projected deficit of $40 million rounding. That is, that is of concern. There's no other way to characterize that. Just today, there was a material released by School Services of California noting that the Senate and the Assembly have reached an accord with Governor Newsom. The challenge for us is, that is so fresh, and we have, do not have an answer to your question, which goes back to statements that I had made June 4th as to the impact upon West Contra Costa. That will be, I'm sure, one of the items that will be at the forefront of any communication from the fiscal group. Perhaps as soon as July, but what is needed is the, what is referred to as the trailer bill. And as yet, I don't, it may have been released. I'm not aware that it has been. And even if it has, we haven't had a chance to work through those numbers to be able to assess the impact on the district. We have no reason to step back from our hope that we will receive additional funding. But I will qualify, the expectation is that funding is not expected to be base building, but will instead be targeted and of a one-time nature. Still positive, we'll figure out how to be able to utilize it to the benefit of our fund balance. But it shouldn't be thought to absolve the deficit you spoke of. In the context of where are we in the process, should the Board of Education approve the budget? Should the Board of Education approve the budget? The next step in the process is for the budget to be submitted to the County Office of Education. We do not at this point in time certify, as we do with the first or second interims. But we would expect is that the county would accept our budget, but would deem it to be essentially a conditional acceptance and would respond to the district that in the timing of the first interim in December of 2025, as it relates to the 25, 26 budget and the two-year forecast, a renewed fiscal solvency plan would be expected to be presented such that the budgets beginning in 26, 27 would be positive. In the event that there are additional revenues, then makes that bottom line easier. To the extent there are additional expenses, things get challenging. I want to also be very clear on another point. The numbers in the budget are the best available numbers we have today. They will be different. But they're not going to be different on the order of, you know, all or none. There will be puts and takes, gives and goes, clawbacks. I'm confident that the budget practices of the district are prudent. We tend to be shy about our revenue forecasts. If our, as a, for instance, if the average daily attendance moves up from the 92% to a higher percent, I'm going to grossly round numbers, but every percent we generate depending upon, and this gets hard because it varies by where the students are by grade level. But let's just say it's $3 million. It goes both ways. If it goes down, we lose $3 million, all other things being equal. That kind of variability and the sensitivity our budget has, given where we are so close to exhausting our reserve funds, will be felt. But it is that kind of movement that you all as a board should expect will occur on a month-over-month basis. And so I know in concert, in conversation with Mr. Carter, Dr. Moses, the effort to fine tune budget to actual variance analysis is going to be an ongoing effort. And at this point in time, I'd be premature to comment, particularly, you know, just cat out of the, you know, address the elephant in the room. Negotiations are ongoing with bargaining units. Those negotiations are not reflected in the forecast, and we will need to see how that all plays out before we know for sure the gravity of the moment.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, I think you said this out loud at the June 4th meeting, but I just want to make sure that it's said again. Parcel tax for '27, '28, the final year, those dollars and what it supports are not in the multi-year projection at this time. Is that correct?
The simple answer is it's correct, but I need to make sure we're saying the same thing, please. And that is that it is in the multi-year forecast as it relates to the year '26, '27. But the parcel tax sunsets absent a vote to reauthorize it June 30th of '27. So for the school year, the fiscal year beginning July 1st of '27 through June 30th of '28, we removed the revenues in concert, or subsequent to a conversation with the county, and we correspondently removed the expenses that the parcel tax revenue offsets.
Okay, thank you. Did you have something else?
Thank you. You actually asked my majority of my questions. I just had one in addition. The, and this one might be for Mr. Fleishman, potentially. We, you're correct, Mr. Hart. 2020, we're spending $38 million in special education contribution. And by 2027, we're projecting about 101 million. So I was wondering if you or Dr. Moses or Mr. Fleishman could talk about, one, like what has led to this very large increase in a short amount of time? And then two, are we also potentially creating a plan to decrease it over time?
I'll take a stab at it, and then I'm sure my comments will be generously amended. A number of factors. One, just same song, different verse. The additional COVID relief dollars gave districts latitude to expend additional dollars for students who had greatest need. It is appropriate. It is not unique to West Contra that additional dollars were spent within the special education program. Secondly, the standards expected in terms of what that service delivery looks like on a per-student basis has changed in a relatively short period of time. There is a heightened level of service. So you're not seeing in that same period a constant per-dollar student expenditure. The per-student expenditure has grown much faster than the number of students enrolled in sped or otherwise deemed sped. It is our cost per student that is driving that. Within that, unpacking the costs. It is the, I'm going to draw a blank on PA. The folks at staff. So it within pro-care, which is the contract for the, if you will, augmenting the teaching staff that we have seen an increase. Transportation, counselors, mental health, behavioral. The gauntlet is a long one. The list, that's probably the wrong word to use, is fairly comprehensive. At that, there are folks, Jeff, Guthrie, Dr. Moses, who will speak, I'm sure, with greater knowledge than I possess, but that's what I have seen in my time here.
I think I can chime in, and then I'll pass it over to Guthrie. I just want to give the overarching areas in which we see growth in expenditures. Over the last six years of salary increases, those impact special ed as well. As we increase salaries, it also increases our contribution to fund the special ed staffing. Also, we've had class size decreases in special ed, with which results in the need for more teachers. So those are two areas that have impacted the staffing expenditures. We also want to lift up that as needs increase, services increase. And we know that a lot of our students during the COVID pandemic experienced significant slide, which recovering from that pandemic requires us to increase the services to those students in order to address their needs and the intense needs that we continue to see. And then lastly, I'll say that as we increase the services, we also must increase staffing, and we are experiencing a staffing shortage. So as we experience a staffing shortage, we still must provide those services to our special education students. And so we must find another solution to bringing in the adults to serve the needs of our students, which has resulted in more work being outsourced, which is also an additional expense. And in addition to that, the cost of doing business in education is just going up around across all arenas. And, and we see those areas of hitting special ed. As these expenses have increased, the revenue has not. And so therefore, our contribution is how we must sustain these programs. So I hope that helps, and I'll pass to Guthrie to see if he has anything to add.
Thank you, Dr. Moses, Mr. Hart. You both were very, very thorough and very eloquent. And so you said about 92 or so percent of the things that I was going to discuss. The only thing that I would add to what you all just described is just kind of a change in the, in the landscape of special education. Across the state, there are a lot of shortages. As the need has grown for more and more of services, there hasn't necessarily been a growth in the workforce. And so as, as Dr. Moses pointed out, that leads to some vacancies, which have a ripple effect. One of the things that, that I have seen from my vantage point is one, one part of that ripple effect is things like compensatory education. The claims for comp ed have certainly grown when we don't have people to provide a particular service. And oftentimes, providing compensatory education after the fact is more, more expensive than if we had a person hired to do the work on the front end. Also, across the state, we're seeing a rise in claims being made, more calls for mediation. ADR has been supportive. However, often that does still end in a mediated agreement, often with comp ed services and things like that. We've seen a growth in the number of students requiring non-public school placements. And so I think, again, like I said, there are just some ripple effects to all of the things that Dr. Moses and Mr. Hart mentioned that drive up these costs as well.
Thank you very much for that. My last question, I promise it'll be the last one. So it sounds, that was a very thorough response, first of all. Thank you. It sounds like to me, from this and previous conversations I've had with all of you, our reliance on pro-care, which has gone up because we have increased need and decreased staffing, unfortunately. It's one of the reasons why the contribution has gone up. One of the many, but one of the, it's a, it's a big one, that contract to pro-care. So do we have a plan, a long-term plan to rely less on that contract and create an in-house workforce? I mean, I can imagine the answer is yes, but I was wondering if you could maybe go into detail as of what that plan would look like? Because I think this is one thing, one of the concerns that we've talked about for a couple of years now. But I think that we can't just, you know, continue relying on just this one contract that is so expensive, right, for us?
I can take that, and I'll pass it to Director Fleishman if he has anything to add. First, I'd like to lift up that last year's pro-care contract was a lot more expensive than this current fiscal year thanks to the hard work of Director Fleishman, who negotiated a lower rate in order for us to retain services and not continue to be, continue to pay exorbitant amounts. The rate that he was able to negotiate is pretty close to what we would pay our in-house staff. However, to your point, we do not want to continue this habit of outsourcing work. We would like to recruit staff who stay in our district and who are continuing to provide services for our students under our direction. And so there does need to be a plan. I can pass it to Director Fleishman. He can talk to you about a lot of the contractors that work in our district. When they get here, they realize that we do have a lot to offer, and we are a desired employee, and some of them do come over and become our staff. And when that happens, we're absolutely ecstatic because it means we're growing our own internal workforce. In terms of a plan to eliminate or reduce the need for contracts, we've been looking at the numbers. We've been evaluating the budget, looking at the needs and ways in which we can provide high service, high level of service to students, but at the same time, have a more stable expectation of the staffing model. And we continue to work on that with our teams, with our families in order to efficiently meet the needs of students and get that number down. In the case that we cannot, we are evaluating the potential of offering different structures to our staffing package. But where we hesitate in this moment is it's going to actually increase our expenditures to implement a plan that focuses on increased compensation because that would have to be increased compensation across the board, which initially would be a lot more than the pro-care contract. So trying to evaluate how to create that plan so that it is financially efficient and something that we can sustain over time is going to require more data collection. And, you know, what we're seeing in terms of the trends are we're actually needing less staffing from pro-care, which is encouraging, and trying to figure out how we can continue to decrease that need without restructuring our compensation plan in this moment. But knowing that in the future, we may need to do something different.
I think Dr. Moses pretty much summed it up pretty well. I just want to lift up that the rate that we are currently paying is competitive market rate. So it's not as much an issue of who we are contracting with as it is the number of vacant positions that exist within our district. And so recruitment efforts, as Dr. Moses said, there, there have been some folks. In fact, yesterday I saw one of my former students who was formerly contracted and has joined the district. So that was, that was a joy. But yeah, it's, it's really about reducing the number of positions that are vacant, that need to be contracted out as opposed to who it is that we contract with that's driving the budget.
Thank you both. That's it, President. Thank you.
Okay, anything else for anyone? Do we do public comment? I got so lost. Do public comment?
Thank you so much.
Mark Mitchell.
Mr. Hart and Mr. Carter, thank you.
You can unmute yourself, please. Mark Mitchell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Mark Mitchell, United Teachers of Richmond. Yet again, this budget presented to the board is wildly inaccurate. It counts hundreds of ghost employees that don't exist as being employed by the district and pulling full salaries and benefits when we know there's well over 300 classified vacancies and over 100 certificated vacancies. They should not be counted as existing. It creates a false fiscal calamity in the outer years of this budget, which is not true. The budget betrays the LCAP. It's a complete contradiction of the, the values stated therein. The 55% threshold was not meant, not met by our district before, during, or after COVID. Using COVID as an excuse is not well-founded. The year that we're talking about, '23, '24, where teachers were cheated out of $11.4 million, the district ended up with $65 million in unrestricted reserves and $100 million in restricted reserves. It had plenty of money.
Sky Nelson.
Thank you, Board. I don't enjoy public speaking, but my head kind of explodes and my belly turns when I hear comments that aren't replied to. I really appreciated the question from student board member about the money for the consultants. And I've been aware as a teacher for a number of months that that was a question because it was put forward by the union a number of times. And it's the first time I've really heard a response to that from Mr. Hart. Thank you for that, sir. But it wasn't detailed, like it didn't actually answer the question. So as a parent and a teacher, I'm thinking about the other teachers that I have to, parents I have to talk to, and like, I have no answer. I still don't know the answer. Who are we spending money on? Is it lawyers? Why? Is it unfilled staffing, special ed? I think that's a different conversation. Is it other special specialists? Why is it different from the other counties? We didn't understand that. Like, that wasn't answered. There was a lot of answer in Mr., Dr. Moses's response. I appreciated the details there. That was helpful. More of that would be very helpful for me as a parent and a teacher, an advocate. Thank you.
Francisco Ortiz, you can unmute yourself.
I don't know if anyone on God's green earth understood what was just said during this presentation. If the overall goal of the Office of Business Services is to privatize public education in West Contra Costa and to follow the billionaire and Trump's agenda, then say it with your chest. Do not dance around the issue. We heard that this is a peculiar case in West Contra Costa. That's absolutely right, because no other district in Contra Costa County has sought waivers four years in a row. Sit with that. There is no other district who is mistreating its employees, mistreating its students, and is furthering, looking to disenfranchise Black and Brown students in our communities, as our district is doing. So if that's the goal of the Office of Business Services, so that they can pack their resume for the next job interview, then say it with your chest.
Chalanda Vera Allen, please unmute yourself. Chalanda Vera Allen.
Good evening, trustees and WCC community. In May, in the reporting from the LCAP, as we looked at the budget, 90% of our budget was earmarked and encumbered for salaries. But we know, as we've heard from UTR earlier this evening, that we have over 300 vacancies. And yet, which would leave a significant amount of money to be rolled over, but we were told that there was no money left to be rolled over, but without being given an explanation as to where those monies went to. But it looks like there's a lot of money missing. And that feels good to no one. So we need more transparency, more specificity about where those line items, of where those monies are going and how they're being spent. Because in this moment, it doesn't look right. Something smells bad. So please, make this clear for us. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you for that. We're now up to motion. Go ahead.
President, could we take a five-minute recess?
Before voting? We can, I just, we have, we have a lot of other stuff to do, so please, back in five. Okay, we're back on. Okay, so we're, we're back. I'll accept a motion to approve the adoption of the 2025-2026 annual budget. Okay, I'll move the item. I move adoption of the 2025-2026 annual budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Trustee Gonzalez, way seconds. Are there comments? No comments? We'll go to, oh, go ahead.
I do have one comment. I would be voting yes, but I do think that there is some also, one thing that really caught my attention, going, circling back to the consulting, the professional expenditures on the budget. I vote yes, because this budget focuses on a lot of critical issues within our revenue income. But at the same time, I think we do, as the district, need to really see more in terms of consulting of one-on-one with the people. I have heard from a lot of people, from parents, even staff members, express how much they want to be engaged with their community in terms of overseeing what the needs are, the people, what the people have to say. So I think for our targeted, for the expenditures on the professional consulting, if there's not an oversight committee, I would like to see it be public. Where all community members from all kinds of backgrounds that work within our district, certified or classified, be part of this committee, so that way they can review it quarterly and actually, one-on-one, get the results that they hope for and see what needs to be changed from that point on. And then also, just maybe even more consider more specific targeted cuts with the help of the oversight committee, more, get more service from our community, community involvement, because a lot of these people want to be engaged, especially in situations like this, that I feel back.
Are there, are there further comments?
Thank you, Trustee Espinoza Jr. Maybe want to say a couple of things as well. I appreciate his comments. I appreciate what staff mentioned tonight. Dr. Moses, what you, what you and Mr. Fleishman talked about. This SPED contribution has been a huge concern of mine, not because I don't think we should provide the services, I actually think we should and we shouldn't increase them, but it's because we have seen such a large growth in such a small amount of time. But I understand what's, what's the reasoning behind it, especially post-COVID. But I completely agree, we need to reduce our reliance on contracts. We need to have a plan, and this is also for Superintendent Cotton. I do think that we have to start thinking, what's our long-term plan to move from, you know, contracts, like our professional contracts, to really thinking critically and hard about, how can we be creative, even if it's an initial courageous investment at first, to try to increase our in-house staffing? Because I also think that, you know, we can probably talk about this later as well, but one of the reasons why we're seeing increased costs is because we sometimes can't control some other consultants to the same extent that we can control our own staffing and train them and support them. And we're also spending money on recruitment and retention, and people are leaving us fairly quickly, so we have to continue to keep them, right? I also know that everybody's overwhelmed, right? I think that every single one of us down in Cabinet to here understands every time we go to a site, one of the first things that people ask us is for more things, right? No one's asking for less. So knowing that needs have increased, but our budget is, we have to make cuts, we have to think really critically, actually, to your advice, Dr. Moses, of what is it that we care about the most? And how are we going to continue to support what's working? Anyways, we have to look at things differently. We can continue to do things like we've always done. We're gonna, we're gonna eventually disappear or become a SPED district. So I just have the challenge that I would like to see a long-term plan. Not just a long-term plan of cuts, right? Because that's, I feel like, since I got on the board, it's always our plan for cutting. That has been for five years. And I want to see the other side. What is our plan to increase enrollment? What's our plan to stop relying on contracts? What's our plan to increase funding, right? But I also say all that with, I know you're all overwhelmed. I really appreciate the work that's happening, so thank you. That's it.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I just want to say thank you for this budget. I know that there's a lot of uncertainty within the community, within a lot of people, because I feel that sometimes information is not filtered in the way that it's understandable to some. Like, you have to know to know. And I think that's one of our biggest mistakes, that we need to make sure that everybody understands the why behind our decisions, because if not, then we are just conspiring to, like, assume. And I think right now, everyone on here, and I feel really good saying that, that I feel that this board is working towards a positive change within the district. We want to see our students thrive. We want to be able to support our teachers, our staff, and really start moving the needle in a positive direction. It just all comes down to how we communicate that. And I want to make sure that we are working in partnership. I want to be as transparent as we can as a board, working with our new superintendent, to see how we can achieve that. Because I think it's gonna take community buy-in, it's gonna take those hard conversations, and even figuring out how we do things different, like changing the narrative of like, where do we need to cut, to like, where do we need to now invest to ensure that we are having finances come in? You know, we have, we need a robust attendance. You know, we need to make sure that people understand how much money we're losing and how we can really, you know, invest in that and ensure that our students are showing up every day to ensure that we, we are not continuing on these cuts. But that's gonna come from having the community buy-in to support some of these decisions. So I hope that we can, you know, start shaping our conversations, making them understandable for the rest of the community and know that we are here with best intent. You know, we are here doing our part. And I can say that for every board member, as long as I've been on this board, I think we started off kind of shaky and rough, but I think we're getting to a point where we are moving in the same direction and we are all here for the same purpose. And we just have to continue to work together and know that we are here doing it for our students.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, and with that, we'll go to the vote. We'll start with the student trustees, Student Espinoza Jr.
Yes.
Student trustee Baron.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Niana.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we are up to E4, Public Hearing and Adoption of Special Education Annual Service Plan and Special Education Annual Budget Plan. So I have opened up a public hearing for the Special Education Annual Service Plan and Special Education Annual Budget Plan. Assembly Bill AB 602 requires special education local plan areas, CELPAs, to submit a local plan, including an annual service plan and annual budget plan. These plans must be adopted at public hearings, as required in Education Code, Section 56205. These plans must identify expected expenditures and include a description of services and the physical location of these services. The local budget and service plans must demonstrate that all individuals with exceptional needs have access to services and instruction appropriate to meet their needs as specified in their IEPs. So the public hearing will be as follows. I've opened it, we'll receive a presentation from staff, board will ask questions, we will receive public comment, and then I will close the public hearing. And so with that, Mr. Fleishman, would you like to present your presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Board President, trustees, interim superintendent Dr. Moses, and Cabinet, and community. I always want to start with some fundamental truths and just some reminders I want to lift up when we talk about the children in our district. I want to remind us to always use people-first language in accordance with Board Resolution 231516. Students, reminder that students with IEPs are general education students first, and special education is a service, it is not a place. Not necessarily a part of the presentation, but it's an important reminder that we always keep in the back of our mind when we have these conversations. So to the service plan, as you mentioned, what we're here for, I'll give you some background. As you just mentioned, we are required to submit a local plan. The purpose of this plan is to ensure that all students have access to the services necessary in IEPs and to assure compliance with state and federal codes and statutes. Next slide, please. So we'll talk about, a little bit about the development and process of the local plan. Next slide, please. So we have, there's a local plan committee, which is included in the attachments here. It is updated cooperatively with a committee each year and every three years. We'll all talk about Part B, which is, which is the larger part that comes every three years. It is, when we have the full local plan every three years, it does need to go through CAC approval before coming to the board. This particular portion of the plan, that is not required. Important to note that it can be amended at any time. When we get into the service plan, Part E, that you'll see, it lists the number, number of services that we have in place in our district based on the needs of our students. You'll see some services there that are not mentioned. That's because we have no students in our district currently requiring that particular service. If a student should arrive, or we should identify a need for that particular service, it would be added to the plan and there would be an amendment. And you see there also, if there are any findings of non-compliance, again, or change of our membership, governance, or any other element of the plan, we are, of course, a single district CELPA, so CELPA membership doesn't really change. Next slide, please. So the process for approval is, we seek approval from the Board of Education. Here, WCCUSD School Board is our governing board for our CELPA, because we are a single district CELPA. We need a signature from the county superintendent, and then we submit it to the CDE by June 30th. Next slide, please. So I'll go over the required elements. Next slide, please. So you see there, Section A is the contacts and certifications. This is just information about who and how, and, and the makeup of our committee and those type of demographic information. Again, Section B was brought to the board in 2023, so it will come back again in 2026. So I do not have Section B here today. Same thing with Section C is not, this year, it will come back in 2627. And what we're looking at today are Sections D and E, the budget plan and the services plan. Next slide, please. So Section A, as I mentioned, it's, it's the administrative unit. It is the dates of review, it is the public hearing date, right here tonight. The certifications by myself and Board President and Superintendent. And for the larger plan, the CAC chairperson would be signing when we bring Section B, but again, not tonight. Next slide, please. So Parts D and E, again, are the, excuse me, the two portions that we're going to look at tonight. As I mentioned, it is the budget plan and the service plan. Both must be adopted at a public hearing. Here we are tonight. Next slide, please. The budget plan includes the revenue by service, the total budget by object codes, federal and state revenue summary, as well as the basic premise of CELPA allocation, our operating expenditures, and our projected expenditures. Next slide, please. The service plan, again, talks about the services that are being provided within our district. This is a moment in time. This can change based on the specific needs of students in our district. So if you look in the service plan and you see services that are not being provided, it's because there's no students in our district currently needing that service. And then, of course, the physical location of the service provision. And then we must demonstrate that all the students who are eligible have access to the services that they need. Next slide. Other required elements, it must be kept locally. We can, next slide, please. We also mention the inter-agency agreements, such as the medical therapy unit that we have here, CCS, Head Start and Regional Center, which are other agencies that we partner with annually. Next slide, please. In addition to federal assurances, each entity providing special education must adopt policies and procedures. Next slide, please. All CELPs in the state are using the same template, which you see here as the attachment on the board agenda. The assurances are required. And again, those are the signatures from myself, Board President and Superintendent. Location of the policies and procedures are required to be listed. The regionalized operation and services are now required. This is new. And the annual services plan and budget plan, again, are required each year. Purpose of the local plan committee is to review the sections of the local plan, provide input, and make any necessary changes on an annual basis. Next slide, please. And that concludes the presentation on the local plan. If there are any questions, I'm happy to field them.
Thank you, Board members. Are there any questions? Go right ahead, Trustee Hernandez.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I had my question, and I lost it. So how are we leveraging early intervention? So how are we leveraging early intervention services and preschool support as referred in the plan to prevent more costly and intensive intervention down the line?
Well, we have a very strong preschool program. Our Cameron preschool does an excellent job. We also provide response to intervention at the school age level through speech therapy as well as other services. We have a student success team, SST, process, and we make many attempts to put interventions in place prior to moving to a full assessment and potential qualification for special education. So this is a collaboration with our general education partners, classroom teachers, site principals, site vice principals as well, school psychologists, counselors, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. And then I have another question. In your presentation, you mentioned the different partnerships, especially with the regional center. What are we doing as a district to make sure that our families, especially our immigrant families, low income, and those families who English is not their primary language, be able to navigate the system and not get lost in the transition from being supported not only by the district, but also the regional center, DOR? What are we doing?
Excellent question. This is a very difficult system to navigate, even for many of us who are professional educators and special educators who have children with disabilities. It's a difficult system to navigate. So I actually recently had a conversation with our parent liaison and a couple of other special education staff that support students at our adult transition program and discussing the needs that we have to support parents in navigating those systems. And really, one of the key factors is starting that process very early. Students with disabilities can receive student services up until their twenty-second birthday. Many parents often start seeking out those next set of services after their child turns twenty-two. They don't start seeking that out until, you know, the child, the young adult is twenty-one years old, thinking that a year or so is plenty of time, and what we're finding is that it's really something that needs to be started much sooner. So we're working on putting a collaboration together with some of our staff and start to put some workshops and things together and support parents as their children are turning eighteen, as they're moving from high school to the adult transition program, and really helping them to start that process much earlier so that when their young adult children do turn twenty-two years old, they've already got the, they understand the system, they know what resources and what rights they have, and they are able to access those right away and not end up waiting much longer after their twenty-second birthday.
Thank you. I have one more question, and I promise it's the last one. What specific strategies are in place to reduce the disproportionality in special education identification, particularly in our African-American community and Latino students in the categories of emotional disturbance or other health impairment?
Excellent question, and I appreciate you asking. It does give me an opportunity to lift up some great work that's happening in our district. One point of clarification, this is actually a big win legislatively, I think, for our state. The term emotional disturbance recently has been replaced by emotional disability because of the the connotations that it had for young people. So this is very recent, and so we do still have that disproportionality right now for African-American students in our district. We have a CSES plan, which we have brought to the board each year that focuses directly on that. We've been having some parent-focused groups as well as some collaborative meetings with site leaders as well as teachers and building that CSES group to address this issue. One thing I really want to lift up, this is fantastic, is that we are no longer disproportionate for African-American students in emotional disability, based on a lot of really good work by the school psychologists in our department and teachers as well. So that's been a success of our district this year. We do remain disproportionate for other health impairment as well as discipline, and so that's the work of the CSES plan to bring that disproportionality down.
Thank you.
Board, before we continue, I would like to extend the meeting to ten-thirty to cover the SPSAs, the public hearing on the engineer's report, and the last deletion of district policy and the consent items. May I have a second on that?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, that was very quiet.
It's our second.
Can you, until what time? Sorry.
Ten-thirty. That means we're talking, no breaks, just get to the business. Okay, with that, student trustee Espinoza Junior.
Yes.
Trustee Barone.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Anjana.
Yes.
Trustee Smith, trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, go ahead. Does anybody else have questions on the presentation? Okay, we'll go to public comment. There's no public comment on the item. Okay, perfect. So in that case, if we've heard public comment, then I can close the public hearing. So I also want to mention that I started the public hearing at nine forty-two and we're ending it at nine fifty-six. Okay, so with that, I'll accept a motion to approve special education annual service plan and special education annual budget plan. I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, so Reckler is the motion, and the second is Anjana. Comments? Go right ahead.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I think one of the things that I just want to say out loud again is your quote, that special education is a service, not a place. So I just want to reiterate that because I think it's so very important and it helps to keep repeating it and keep explaining what it means because it helps shift the culture. I know as a special education parent, just hearing you say that that one time, I was like, all right, that's, it makes it different in the way that I think about, that I think about special education. So special education is a service, not a place. Thank you. I'm complete.
Okay, we'll go to the vote. Student trustee Espinoza Junior.
Yes.
Trustee Barone.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Anjana.
Yes.
Trustee Smith, trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion passes unanimously. I have just been told that the public hearing on the engineering report is time-sensitive. So if it's okay, if we could just go ahead and do that one first so that we don't run out of time on it. So is that okay with everyone? Okay, so with that, I am going to open a public hearing. I'm opening a public hearing on Resolution number two-four-two-five-nine-seven, approving the engineer report, confirming diagram and ordering the continuation of the levy of assessment for the fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-six. The board is holding a public hearing to hear any comments from the public regarding the Maintenance and Recreation Assessment District, known as MRAD, for twenty-five, twenty-six. Staff in the engineer will be available to answer questions on the MRAD. After the public hearing, board can adopt a resolution approving engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of the assessment for the fiscal year of twenty-five, twenty-six. So I've opened the public hearing. We'll have a presentation from staff. The board will ask questions, will take public comment, and then I will close the public hearing. So Ms. Payne, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In the interest of time, I'll just share with you quickly that the district established the Maintenance and Recreation Assessment District, known as MRAD, in nineteen ninety-four. Staff is recommending approval of the engineer's report and continuation of the assessment at seventy-two dollars per single family, which is the same rate as nineteen ninety-four, going back almost thirty years. We're recommending continuing that assessment for next fiscal year, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six, which will provide about five-point-six million dollars in revenue that we will use for maintaining essential funding for our community recreational facilities through capital improvements and the maintenance of those facilities. And so tonight, we're recommending approval.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions? Go ahead, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. A quick one. Thank you, Ms. Payne. Why haven't we seen an increase on the fees for MRAD?
It's a great question. Part of what we've looked at is there is a calculation of general benefit and special benefit, and based on the amount that the district contributes for maintenance and operations of our grounds throughout our district, we're still within compliance for the original approval that dates back to nineteen ninety-four and then was renewed by voters almost twenty years ago. And so at this time, maintaining that same rate still keeps us within compliance for this district and really helps us to maintain the facilities and grounds that we have.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there public comment on the item?
Yes, we have public comment. Jen Kishner, please unmute yourself.
Good morning, board. On this late evening, I just wanted to say I hope that this is the money that they are gonna use to help fix the Verdi preschool, Head Start slash TK kindergarten playground. We were without it for over seven months, and right now it's, thank goodness, because it was unsafe. It's been leveled. And our kids need a place to play that isn't rated out of their age group. The other playgrounds got redone last year, but somehow ours was left off because, I don't know why, but it became so unsafe. They taped it off. They told us we couldn't be on it, and now it's in progress of getting replaced. So I really, really, really hope we get that soon because our babies need it. Thank you.
Kai Nelson, please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'll be brief. I'm back. Thank you. I just, I heard from another, I want to advocate for this question of whether other schools and other geographies are using our facilities that are being paid for by these funds and are our local kids and community members able to access, like the Field of Kennedy enough with the funds that they've paid from their taxes. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who gave public comment. That concludes public hearing at ten oh three PM. Okay, so now on to approving the engineering report. I'll accept a motion to approve Resolution two-four-two-five-nine-seven, approving the engineering report.
President Reckler, I move Resolution number two-four-two-five-nine-seven.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Hernandez will second. Is there any public comment? I mean, any board comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Student trustee Espinoza Junior.
Yes.
Student trustee Barone.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Clerk Anjana.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds.
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we'll flip back now to E five, which is the Single Plan for Student Achievement, SPSAs.
Good evening again. So tonight, we are bringing forward our Single Plan for Student Achievement, which we more commonly refer to as SPSAs. Next slide. The SPSA is each school's annual roadman for improving student outcomes, and all of our West Contra Costa Unified School District schools are required to submit an SPSA to ensure thoughtful planning that aligns to the district priorities and that meets the specific needs of their students. Tonight, we are bringing forward every school's SPSA for approval as a single batch. The full plans are available on our district website for public review, and this year, we've also provided a shortened overview for each school's SPSA that highlights their key priorities in a more accessible format. Next slide. So at its core, the SPSA is how each school turns continuous improvement into a focused strategic plan for raising student achievement and how that aligns to our LCAP, to our strategic plan, and how it's created in collaboration with educational partners from the school and then approved by those local parent advisory committees. Next slide. This effort is led by school principals and their site teams, and it begins with reviewing the data and analyzing that school-level data to determine what the needs are of the students, the effectiveness of past strategies. It leads them to create meaningful goals with aligned metrics, and then they align activity strategies and resources to make sure that these goals are met. Next slide. So as you review the SPSAs for our school sites, you're gonna see that all of them follow the same format. They all have narratives that describe their purpose. They have a description of the annual review. They have a description of the achievement strategies, a budget summary, and then they describe their educational partner involvement. Next slide. This year, we paid a lot of attention in really simplifying the process so that our template was more accessible and really focused on what was important. And so this is the format that each of the three goals follows. They identify the need, they create a goal, they align the expected annual measurable outcomes, and then they have the aligned strategies right below it. And some of the most common strategies that were highlighted among our fifty-two SPSAs show a commitment to having family night opportunities to build capacity and to celebrate achievement. We saw lots of investments around additional staffing, so funding vice principals, instructional specialists. We also saw a lot of investments around increasing time for classified staff, so secretary and office manager, additional overtime hours, more time for clerks, our school community outreach workers, and more staffing around safety. And so increasing, for example, yard duty hours to ensure that students are safe during unstructured times. We saw extra hours also being invested for certificated staff to be able to provide tailored tutoring after school for students. We saw commitment around data analysis and providing allocations for release days and hours for collaboration and conferences. We saw a lot of schools set aside funding for experiential learning through study trips, materials and supplies, and online licenses that align to meeting those goals. And then finally, many of our school sites did make investments through the use of contracted services to provide additional mental health support, to provide additional culture climate supports, and to be able to support an enriching education around the arts. Next slide. All of our strategies and investments are created with input and collaboration from our school site councils, and these are also returned then with a more final draft and approved by the school site council, and that is a separate vote to the budget as well. Next slide. For our schools that have more than twenty-one English learners, this exact same process for input is followed by school sites. Next slide. for input is followed um by school sites. Next slide. And then finally, for West Contra Costa, we also have our sites engage with the African American Parent Advisory Council um in the SPSA development, just like we do for ELAC. Next slide. So all of these engagements um are captured in the notes and agendas of each school site's PAC meetings. And approvals are also captured on the actual SPSA through signatures from each school site. So you can see there's a signature for ELAC. Um, we also um have the opportunity to be able to add an ILT member, the African Advisory Committee, and then the SSC um and principal approval is at the bottom of this page to affirm and attest that the process was followed and um that there was a approval from each one of those delegates that the process was um done with integrity. I do wanna name that all of our school sites being brought forward, so every single one of them followed the outline process that I just described. However, four schools do have some corrections to make in the fall to be aligned with meeting our federal program monitoring expectations. And one school is missing a signature. However, this school did meet all of the requirements for the engagement and approvals. Next slide. And that completes my presentation. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any questions on the SPSAs? From anyone? I have one. Do you know dollars-wise, did schools receive more or less dollars uh than last year?
Um, the allocation that
And I'm also, I'm only talking LCFF. I'm not talking all the Title One, you know, thingies.
Thank you. Um, yes, so it's three point eight million dollars. Um, it's the same allocation that we provided schools last year.
I'm sorry, did you say it was the same?
Three point eight million, yes. And um, Mr. Hart can correct me if I'm incorrect there.
Okay, thank you. No, no other questions on it? Okay, is there public comment on the SPSAs?
No public comment.
Okay, I'll accept a a motion to approve.
President, I move approval of all the SPSAs presented.
Great. Is there a second? I'll second it. Uh, and are there any comment comments on the on it? Go ahead, trustee Smith Folds.
Um, thank you so much for bringing the SPSAs to us in a timely manner. I think that that's a huge leap forward. I also think that um having them come together is good, but having a conversation about them separately is also good, right? Because high high school SPSAs and elementary school SPSAs and then our K-eight SPSAs, they all kind of offer something a little bit different, right? Also think that it is incredibly important that we build the SPSA from the bottom up. You have to have a strong SSC, which means you have to have a strong parent engagement at your school site to build the PAC, right? So you have to have a strong parent engagement to build your APAC, to build your ELAC, that then funnels into your SSC. You have to have a strong SSC to help build a strong SPSA. So I think that um the district is doing very well focusing in on up, down, and down up, right? At every level, and and the result would be a very strong site plan. So I think we're headed in the right direction. I think we need to give our site principals um more strategies for engagement when it comes to their their parents. Especially when you're on the way out, like it, like our elementary to middle school transition and our middle school to high school transition. How do we tap one principal to say, hey, this is a cool parent that I had on the SSC, you may wanna reach out to them because they're coming to middle school now, and they would be willing to help you with your APAC or your ELAC or to be on your SSC and then to help with your SPSA. And then bring, teach one, reach one, right? You don't wanna have the same people doing the same work, but having more people uh having a roster, I think. So um, I'm complete. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If none, we'll go to the vote. Student trustee Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Student trustee Baron?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Clerk Agnana?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Motion carries unanimously. Um, I would like to uh table the uh E seven, the district-specific policy to the July meeting. It's very inconsequential. Spend the time on the consent items, if that's okay. Okay, so we'll go back and then just in the Okay, going back to, let's start with um C fifteen, the student travel to China, which I feel is the more important item in case the discussion is long. Trustee Smith Folds, would you like to address that?
I would like to address C three because it's really quick, so I could be able to get both of them done. C three first, if I could, because it's very quick.
Okay, sure.
Um, I pulled C three, and the reason I pulled C three is I would like to move these reports to the budget subcommittee so it can give the community opportunity to engage with the numbers through comment and by asking questions. Having these reports in consent without a narrative that accompanies them could lead to a misunderstanding and an erosion of trust. Again, it would be my suggestion that we move these particular reports to the budget subcommittee. So there's an opportunity for the public to have comment and for there to actually be, actually to be a discourse back and forth. I'm complete.
Okay, great. That's a great suggestion. Would you like to move the item?
I would. I'll move item C three.
Is there a second on C three?
A second.
Okay, so it's uh, so Folds and Clerk Clerk Agnana, and any other comments? None. Go to the vote. Student trustee Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Student trustee Baron?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Clerk Agnana?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Smith Folds is a yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, we're up to C fifteen.
So I pulled this uh item about the student uh study trip to China for a couple of reasons. One, I would like to ask a question of our, I would like to ask two questions. So I pulled it to ask two questions, have a discussion and a roll call vote. The first question I would like to ask is, what did our risk manager or managers say about this trip? If I could have an answer to that.
Thank you for the question. Um, when evaluating the study trip for approval, we did reach out to our representative from Keenan and Associates, which is our risk management company. Um, the recommendations were that um we um if we were to approve this trip, that we have families to sign a waiver and release um for out-of-state travel, um acknowledging that students will be living with host families that we do not get to screen. Um, the second recommendation was that we ensure that everyone has a permission slip. And the third is that they have travel insurance um because of the uh travel overseas. There's also a concern raised that there is a um uh level-two advisory regarding this travel um to China. Um, but our risk manager advised that if we did these things, we would be able to mitigate some of the risk. And the rest is up to the board to decide um what what they're comfortable with.
Okay, so what I heard you say was the risk management said, risk managers said that here's a list of things that need to be done. If you do those things, some of the risk can be mitigated, but not all of the risk can be mitigated. And do we know, you said that there was a travel advisory of level-two? Is there a uh soft warning or a hard warning about traveling to places, for example, China right now, in our current climate?
I don't have the advisory pulled up. I will look to do that shortly. But if I remember correctly, from memory, um the travel advisory says to travel um with caution. Um, so that you should um, you know, be aware of uh potential um situations that could arise, but it did not say travel is not recommended. It just said that um travel is um did I just say?
Travel with caution.
Travel with caution, yes.
Okay, so those are the questions that I had. I'll, I brought it to a board vote because I don't feel comfortable in the time and stage that we're in with what's going on in the world, what we just the bombs that are just happening, the things that are just happening, the risk management saying that there's still a risk, and then the travel saying that it's travel with caution. It makes me feel very leery to send children under our umbrella of this, of a district trip. This is a district trip. If this was an independent trip, fine. And I know that we've had many trips that go outside without, under the district umbrella, grad nights, trips to Washington DC for eighth grade. All of those things are outside the district's control and district liability. This falls under our control and our liability. So that is why I will be voting no. I'm complete.
Go ahead.
I think my question is just kind of bouncing off of what trustee Smith folds. What conversations do we have with the parents? Because I know you're saying that we are letting them know that they have to sign certain papers that have to do with the liability, but are we explaining to them in full detail what that means? And are, because I think there's processes, so if, I know there's been China trips before. So are we following the same process or is this a different process with this specific trip that has been planned um versus the previous trips?
Thank you for the question. I see that Catherine is back on the line. Catherine worked directly with the administrator to get the approvals for the trip, so I'd like her to address that question as to how communities, um how the communications are being um shared with uh parents. Go ahead, Catherine.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, so I definitely worked with Dr. Peterson, who's been um championing this effort for many years, close to a decade now. Um, we are following the same protocols, but now have enhanced them um to be able to make sure that both the district's liability is covered and that our students and staff are um safe because uh fourteen of our staff members are going to be attending during their time off. Um, there was a mandatory parent orientation um that describes this entire process of how housing um and safety is covered. And then we added per the um advice of our risk manager, this affirm and attest signature um describing or really um confirming for the district that parents understand the liability and the um risks involved with going on an international trip. And as well, we did add that additional um travel insurance that really um, you know, adds an extra layer of support should something um happen.
I'm gonna have a follow-up question to that. Are we doing this initial um presentation to parents in English? Or is there other languages that are being included for their understanding?
Um, I don't have the details of that, but like we do any of our parent meetings, we we try to provide um families with all of the information. We do have um sixty students that are attending from all over the district um with the highest number attending from Pinot Valley. Um, but I don't have the information about the specifics of translator or translation services that were provided.
My question goes back to the worldwide caution. Um, what are we doing to make sure that, like, what is our plan if there was a disruption? Like flights canceled, people stuck in a foreign country, like, how are we gonna make sure that our students and staff are safe? I I just don't feel comfortable because it's, what are, have we followed up since? I'm asking like too many questions at once, sorry. Have we followed up with our families after this security warning has gone out? That's the first question.
Um, thank you for the question, and definitely when Dr. Moses um and I checked in with our risk manager, you know, was a a couple of weeks ago now, and the world looks a little bit different now. And so I think that um there's a lot of questions for sure, and they're all um important questions. I do not believe that there's been any additional um conversations with families about the changes of the risk that have happened, given um the last changes in the last week.
So if I can make a comment from the US Department of Travel, the State Travel Department, China is a level-two, but it's been a level-two since November of twenty twenty-four, so it hasn't changed recently. It's been that way. Greenland, the UK, Spain, France, Scandinavia. All of those are level-two. So um, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, but we haven't dropped bombs. We just, we haven't dropped bombs in five years. The United States of America dropped bombs, and I don't know what that would do to travel because I don't know what the response would be if someone retaliates back and you're stuck in, if you're in China and someone retaliates back and all flights are grounded. Or something happens, you can go from a two to a three to a four to a, yellow to a red like that. And what is our response? What is our backup plan to get kids, sixty kids and fourteen staff members back here? If something happens, we are in times that we have never been in in our recent lifetime. So what I'm saying is, is the risk worth it? And for me, it's not worth the risk. So that's just where, that's my rebuttal comment. I'm complete.
And and I understand your concern, and I I I I I feel your concern. My response was just to when the travel advisory kicked in, and it wasn't yesterday, it was in November. And many other countries that we would consider allies are also level-two, including Greenland. That, you know, like, who's there? Like, five people, so.
Thank you. Um, I mean, I think we're kind of in the discussion section, so if it's okay, I have a comment. Um, I I I mean, I agree with the president, said, actually looked back. They they had a a level-two advisory in twenty thirty, uh twenty twenty-three as well. Um, but I also agree with you. I think that we're in a very interesting time in history, and I think that right now things are scary, not just because of what's happening uh with our involvement in the Middle East, but also with heightened uncertainty with the current uh Trump administration, right? Um, and, you know, travel that is happening as well, and whether or not people can come back. Um, so I definitely understand your perspective, uh, understand all of your perspective. I'm not really sure where to land on this, and we have like three minutes to vote. Um, so um, I would just appreciate if my last two minutes, if Eric could give their perspective, because I think that would help me on how to vote.
Real quick, my perspective on this, I want to make sure that our parents understand how i- in what state we are in right now. I think sometimes, you know, we don't wanna induce fear into our communities, but I also believe that people have to have an understanding of what this means, what this looks like. And they have to be really aware that there 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 is something happening, right? And I think as a board, we are here to ensure that our students and our teachers and staff are safe. So I just wanna throw that out there. I know that, you know, families feel different ways. It hits my family different than it might hit someone else's in that liability issue. But I really want to ensure that we are doing everything we we can possibly do to communicate every risk to our parents and our families and let them be the ones that at the end of the day make that decision for their students, with all that being said.
Is it okay if we go to vote, and then you could vote last, if you wanna do that? We could show our preference with our vote. Okay, student trustee Espinoza Junior?
Real quick, what's the motion again?
Oh, to approve a chip, a trip to China.
No.
Sorry, president, just to clarify, we haven't actually done the motion.
Oh, well, I'm actually on the consent. We actually don't ever really
That's right.
Right? We just like move the
Right.
Right? Okay, so student trustee Espinoza Junior, I think I got a no. Trustee Baron?
No.
Trustee Hernandez?
No.
Clerk Agnana?
Come back to me.
Trustee Gonzalez.
No.
Trustee Smith Folds?
Smith Folds, no.
Do you want to know?
No.
And I'm a yes. Motion fails. Okay, so that concludes everything but our pulled item. Our next meeting is in July. Let's see here, that is July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, right here at La Vanya de John Middle Let's see here. That is July sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, right here at La Vanya de John Middle School. And we wish you a very pleasant evening and hope that you enjoy the summer. Congratulations to all our graduates. Congratulations to all our retirees. Congratulations to everybody who was on that page of serving twenty-plus years. That's just amazing. And that's it for the evening. Meeting is called to close at ten twenty-nine. Thank you.